Call to order the regular city council meeting from Monday, August 5th, 5:30 PM. Thank you all for attending. At this time, I ask you to please silence your cell phones or put them on vibrate as to limit interruptions from the speakers. At this time, let's move on to item number one on the agenda, and that's the roll call.
Bless them. Fuller?
Here.
Janser?
Here.
Olson?
Pittner?
Ross?
Samuelson?
Here.
Item number two, please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to the mayor's report, just a few items to mention since our last regular city council meeting and my last mayor's report. I did have some time with some members of the community. We met with Colorado Congressman Doug Lamborn and also General Connor were in town to visit the base and visit the community. So we had a good meeting and a good event with them. Team Minot Breakfast, we had a ribbon cutting at Dakota College in Baton Rouge, the CTE building, and Lisa, I know you played a big role in that beautiful facility, and that's going to be a wonderful, wonderful neighbor to all of Minot. So I'm looking forward to seeing the results there. Also, a few of the members of the council attended the AGT Foods Open House and Ribbon Cutting at their Center of Excellence, another wonderful investment by AGT Foods and their ownership. We did have the budget question and answer. Military Affairs at the NDSU Research Extension Center, it's always a wonderful time to get our friends on base out to see what the other commodities that North Dakota is known for and why we feed the world with the highest quality food supplies. So I'd like to thank the members of NDSU and their team out there for hosting the Military Affairs Committee. Also spent some time last Friday on base helping award the second quarter Bomb Wing Awards, and I also want to give a shout out to Craig Rudlin and the team at the North Dakota State Fair for once again having another outstanding North Dakota State Fair event. So that is all I have. Before I do move on, I do want to, before I pass it on to the city manager's report, I'm going to ask for a motion to move items 7.1 and 7.2, move them up on the agenda to just after the city attorney's report. Reason being is we have our attorney, and in order to save dollars, we're paying him by the hour, so I'd like to move them up, but move them out as soon as possible. So at this time, I would entertain a motion for that.
So.
We have a motion by Mike, second by Paul. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Bless them?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number four on the agenda, the reports. First, we have the city manager's report. Harold.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'll keep this fairly brief this evening. First of all, I just want to provide a reminder that next week, starting August 14th, we'll have a series of virtual question and answer sessions for the public with regards to the 2025 budget. Those are scheduled for over the noon hours, so hopefully over your lunchtime, and those will also be recorded. So if you're not able to participate, you can submit questions in advance either to the PIO office or my office. But Wednesday the 14th, we'll have a question and answer on the public works budgets, and then on Thursday the 15th, we will have a question and answer session on public safety, police and fire. And then at noon on the 16th, will be just all other general governmental budgets for question and answers. So it encourages the public to join us for those. Again, you can submit your questions in advance or during the meeting live, and if you miss them, then you can come back and watch those through the city's website and recordings on those. With that, I'd stand for any questions that the council may have with regards to the city manager memo that's been prepared and available to the council and the public in the packet.
Are there any questions of the city manager? Seeing none, we will move on to item 4.2. That's the city attorney's report. Stephanie.
Mayor, members of the council, I submitted a written report and can stand for any questions at this time.
Any questions of our city attorney? Seeing none, we will move on to item 7.1, which is the resolution offering to purchase land and authorize use of the eminent domain authority. And we do have our attorney, Mr. John Warkup, who's on. What are the wishes of the council before we move into discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
I guess I would move the authorization as presented.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Lisa. Further discussion, I guess at this time, John, Mr. Warkup, I'll turn the microphone over to you for some background and any further discussion that you may have.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is John Warkup. I've been asked by the city of Minot to assist them in various acquisitions relating to public works improvement projects such as the flood project and the puppy dog coolie project. Ms. Stahlheim and I worked together to put together a memo which has been presented to the council. This is the first step in the process of acquiring property through eminent domain, and negotiations have been started. They haven't been successful. We've tried, but ultimately, we ask the city council to approve a resolution authorizing the initiation of an eminent domain action. Certainly during this time, we would still be entertaining any offers or any discussion that the property owner might have if we always work to try to get something resolved through an amicable process short of starting an eminent domain action, but sometimes we have to do that. Even if an eminent domain action is started, we would still entertain any offers or discussions or requests for meetings from the property owner. This is simply the first step where the city council authorizes the initiation of an action. The next step for our office would be to draft the appropriate pleadings, get them filed with the court, served upon the property owner, and proceed with the eminent domain action. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have regarding the process or this particular property owner.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Warkup? I don't see any, John. Any further questions? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Bless them?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 7.2, resolution offering to purchase land and authorize use eminent domain authority, the Parkview MHP LLC. What are the wishes of the council?
I'd move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
Was that Scott? Second by Scott? And Mr. Warkup, John, the floor is yours if you have anything else to add.
I really don't have anything further to add. Again, this is the first step in an eminent domain process, and again, negotiations have been attempted but not successful so far.
Any questions of Mr. Warkup? Any further discussion on this item? We have a motion and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Bless them?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Warkup, for joining us this evening.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council.
Moving on to item number five on the agenda, public hearings. 5.1, a public hearing, public comment on the CDBG consolidation plan. Now is an opportunity for those, it's a public hearing, now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the consolidated, the proposed consolidated CDBG consolidated plan. Chris, do you have anything? Would you like to step forward and maybe provide some background and?
Mayor Ross and members of the council, I do have Elizabeth McNanny here. She is the consultant that has assisted with the preparation of the consolidated plan. She does have a short presentation, and she will stand for any questions regarding that or the articles of impediments. So I'd like to introduce Elizabeth McNanny.
Thank you, council. It is my pleasure to be here tonight, and I will just go through a very quick presentation. Some of you have seen some of these slides when I was here previously, but there is a little bit of additional information. This is about the HUD five-year consolidated plan for the Community Development Block Grant. HUD requires that each community who receives money complete a five-year plan once every five years and submit an annual action plan. The overview of the program is to provide decent housing, a suitable living environment, and expand economic opportunities primarily for low mod income persons in the community. And really, it's about leveraging partners because city staff can't manage everything. It's about finding really good community partners for development of housing and public services and targeted investment. The components of the plan are a housing needs assessment, which is a very prescriptive HUD process, not like your housing needs analysis or assessment that you have recently completed that's kind of community-wide, a market analysis, five-year strategic plan, broad, very broad, an annual action plan which kind of delineates where the buckets of funding will be, an analysis of impediments to fair housing choices, a separate document. Utilizing funding, needs are established and goals, and then projects. Those are the parts that are in the consolidated plan and the annual action plan. Activities are actually a function of the other side of HUD's system for tracking what communities do, but those top three things are included in the consolidated plan. Every activity must meet a national objective. Typically, those are to benefit low and moderate income residents of the community, can use it in a small portion to aid the elimination of slum and blight, and then urgent need. So I think you all know about urgent need from things like the flood, and you wouldn't use urgent need as a category unless HUD told you you could. Usage caps, you can use up to 15% of your total allocation annually for public services. The CDBG allocation for the city of Minot as a first-year entitlement is $331,580. So up to 15% of that can be used for public services, and then up to 20% can be used for planning and administration. There's definitely a lot of planning that goes into this. There's also technical assistance that HUD requires that entitlement communities provide to their subrecipients and monitoring. So here are some of the eligible public services. It's not an exhaustive list, and some additional eligible activities. So you can do acquisition, clearance, reconstruction, rehabilitation, assistance to low and moderate income home buyers, and public facility and infrastructure work that benefit primarily low and moderate income residents of the community. Completely ineligible activities are buildings used for the general conduct of government, general expenses, and political activities. You also would not, wouldn't use the money primarily for purchase of equipment or operating and maintenance expenses. You can renovate or rehabilitate or build a park in an eligible area, but you can't pay to mow the grass. Construction of new permanent residential structures, so even though it's a housing and urban development program, you can't build houses. And direct income payments, you can't just hand money to people. Here are the income limits for the city of Minot. These are word counties' income limits, and this is 80% of the area median income. So anyone in, let's say, a four-person household who makes $84,150 or less could be eligible for CDBG services and funding. The analysis of impediments, where it differs from a broad community housing needs assessment, is that this is really prescriptive. Again, this is about protected classes. So HUD's protected classes, the federal protected classes, are listed here, and so it really has to do with how housing is impacted or how the protected classes are impacted with fair housing. So race, religion, national origin, color, familial status, sex, and disability. And that's a very, 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 very brief overview of what we've been working on for a number of months, but I am happy to stand for any questions that council members may have about the plans.
Mike?
Thanks, Elizabeth. So, and I was at the public forum and got some of the info there, but just wanted to maybe get a clearer picture of what's actually going on. So we've got $331,000 that's been allocated by HUD towards our program, correct?
Yes.
Of that, 20% can go towards administration, whether that's city staff, working with you, all the different things that keep us compliant, right? So that, that 20% essentially comes off the top right away, so roughly $70,000. So we're down to roughly $260,000. From there, we can use another 15% for public service, and so that's, that's another thing, while it can't be direct, did I catch that right? It can't be direct operations, let's say. It can be for infrastructure and things that support LMI initiatives and things like that. Is that the right way to look at that?
Alderman, that is, so the public services can be direct services.
Okay.
So you can actually provide services. You can, you can help pay for staff at domestic violence shelter or, you know, for Meals on Wheels or something like that. You can actually provide direct public services with that 15%, which is like $49,000. And then the balance of it can be used for things like infrastructure and to support development of housing that, you know, that would support low and moderate income residents. Public facilities, so if there are repairs to a nonprofit's public facilities that are needed, that could be supported through that balance.
Can I continue?
Continue.
Okay, so, so I think, I think that makes sense. So I think, I think the thing, so what we're talking about tonight is the, the base plan, right? We've got to get something approved in order to keep the process moving forward. And so I guess where my mind goes with this, with this type of entitlement that's coming from the federal government is all the different strings and, and, you know, compliance issues and all the things that go with that, because what I would like for all of us as council to think of and as we're developing these projects is let's try to do ones that, that don't leave us in a position, one of the ones you mentioned in your presentation is a park, right? So we could do a wonderful thing with a park that's, that's maybe in a great area for, for folks that would use it, but we leave ourselves with the maintenance burden out the back end, and that is, that cannot be covered by the entitlement funds going forward, correct?
Correct.
And so I think that's important for all of us to be thinking about is that we don't continue digging our own hole budget-wise by trying to grab a couple dollars from the federal government. So I think we want to be really strategic in how we do those things. We've all gone through all the effort now to get to this point. Let's not dig the hole deeper on our budget side by adding that type. And there are great projects we can do. That wouldn't do that, correct?
Absolutely, Alderman. In fact, you can do upgrades to existing parks in eligible areas. So, you know, it doesn't just have to be about building something new. You can do upgrades to things that are already in place, that you are already maintaining, that may actually reduce the cost of maintenance because you've built something that's better than what was there before.
Lisa?
Yeah, thank you. Just one quick question. Is it use it or lose it, or are there carry over funds that we can use if we, you know, decided that there was a project that was bigger that we could do in three years? Are we able to carry over those dollars?
That's a great question, alderwoman. Olson, it is, it's a sticky question. Yes, you can carry over funds. So right now HUD has a timeliness test 60 days prior to the beginning of your next fiscal year. So this won't be a problem next year because you wouldn't have 1.5 times your entitlement in your fund balance, basically. But if you reach that 60 days before the start of your next fiscal year, you would be what HUD would call untimely. And if you're untimely a couple of times, they like to come help you be timely. So they are changing that process. Hopefully, there are some proposed changes to the CDBG regulations and rules and removing that timeliness test and allowing communities to do those longer-term investments that are so important, especially for communities that receive a limited amount of money, smaller communities. It is really important that you have the ability to carry that money over, to do something bigger three years down the road. So that will likely be an opportunity as time goes on.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah, something else then, and this may be something more for Harold or someone on the city side. How does this actually play out then? How does this actually play out then? So we've got this, this is for fiscal year '24, which, does that end September 30? Are we in fiscal '24?
Fiscal '24 for the city started on July 1st, so it doesn't end until June 30th.
So it just started. So is it, is it, are these, would these be things that are in the budget, Harold? Or is this a totally separate item that council handles on a project-by-project basis?
Maybe I'll defer to Chris to come up and answer that question, but typically the CDBG funds, well, the NDR and HUD funds that we've had with regards to response to the 2011 flood have been separate. Those have been received, those have different timelines, different policies, procedures, et cetera. These would probably be received as a revenue and then budgeted out as an expense. It would go through the city's budget process annually with recommendations from staff on, recommendations that, of projects and those types of things that meet the national objectives and the policies and procedures, and in accordance with the plan that you have in consideration before you this evening.
Can I continue? So right now with the '25 budget that we've got in front of us, do, just getting at the, the carryover question, are we going to be on track? Because I, unless I'm not remembering it, is there something in the '25 budget to begin spending funds?
We'll have Jenna come, come answer that one.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor and Alderman, bless them. It is included in the 2025 budget for the full amount that we anticipate to get for our FY 2025 allocation. And it would be limited to be spent on those items that are identified in the action plan.
So if I can continue, so right now, the 20, these $20, $24, the 331 right now, was that in the '24 budget?
They were not.
They were not. So, so right now, we're not accounting for that income coming in. '25 is accounting for income, but we're not accounting for either expenditure year right now? Is that correct?
2025's budget will have both the revenue and the expense.
And is it just a one item, the total amount?
Yep, it's in its own fund, so you'll see it separate.
Okay. So there's no, my point is, so there's no, there's no projects at this point. There's nothing that we've said, here's what we're doing. The funds are in the budget, but we've not said, here's what we're doing with it, correct?
Correct, yep.
Okay, seeing nothing. Thank you, Elizabeth.
Great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the consolidated plan. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
I would move that we close the public hearing and approve the consolidated plan and authorize staff to submit it to HUD for review and approval.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? Anything further? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Moving on to public hearing 5.2, the Richard Peterson move request. Now the public, the, the public hearing is open, and those who wish to speak in favor of or against the move request, now is your opportunity to speak.
Richard Peterson, so I just appreciate you guys looking into this again and approving the zoning thing so I can get this moving request, so I don't know if there's any questions, but other than that, won't waste your time.
Okay. Any questions on Mr. Peterson? Thank you. Second call for anybody who wishes to speak in favor of or against the proposed. Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Lisa?
I move that we close a public hearing and approve the recommendations.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rob. Any further discussion? Anything further? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 5.3, public hearing, the Craig Rudland move request. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to speak in favor of or against the recommended action. Now is your time to step forward.
Good evening, city council. Looking at, yeah, moving the garage over to my home property, and I think it fits really nice in the neighborhood. I keep my property very much maintained, and, and this will be a good addition to the neighbor, neighborhood, and I think I'd have a, a staff to pass motion, so thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Craig. Any further comments? Any further comments on the proposal? Seeing none, what are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Lisa?
I move that we close a public hearing and approve the recommendations.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Motion passes. Moving on to item, action item six, that's our consent agenda. We have 25 items on our consent agenda. I have been asked to pull, nothing has been asked to be pulled from the consent agenda. So what would, what are the wishes of the council?
Move approval on the remaining items.
We have a motion by Paul to move, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mark. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janzer?
Yes.
Olson?
Motion passes. Moving on to action items, item seven on the agenda is action items. We already addressed 7.1 and 7.2, so moving on to 7.3, budget amendment and lease buyout authorization for six motor graders. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mark.
I'll move the recommendation.
We have a motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Harold?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I don't know if Mr. Banfield is prepared. I think he might have a presentation with regards to this. This is an effort of city staff trying to look at how we replace and finance a lot of these major pieces of equipment that we use for multiple functions throughout the year. And I just wanted to highlight the effort that staff has made to try and save the city and the taxpayers of the city of Minot some funds over the upcoming years on some important pieces of equipment. So, Mr. Banfield, if you want to provide some background and, and the changes of current operation to what we're proposing with, with this action tonight.
Mr. Mayor, city council, Mr. Stewart, thank you for the time to go ahead and speak to this. Give me one minute, I'll go ahead and get set up, and I'll have the presentation up. Apologize. So city council, just letting everybody know what went into the decision process when it comes to these graders. It was not a decision we took lightly, so we went through a few different options. One thing I would like to highlight is some of the assumptions that went into these options. So we were factoring in the current 2024 budget of about $156,000. These are for the six motor graders, which are a critical item during the snow removal activities. Additionally, we routinely, or at least seen in the past, and average about 400 to 500 hours per machine being accrued throughout the course of the snow season, which means that the total service life would need to be taken into account as well. So right now, for these pieces of equipment, on average, we look to about 5,000 hours or to accrue about 5,000 hours, and we have seen in the past that at this point is when we start noticing additional maintenance hours or additional maintenance time and cost associated with it. So with our current pieces of equipment that we do have in our, in our inventory, they are under 2,000 hours, so that is some goodness for us. So it leaves us with about 3,000 remaining hours. So factoring that in to the 400 to 500 hours per season we would normally expect to accrue, that gives us roughly about an eight-year service life expectation for each of these pieces of equipment. So factoring that in, we'll start with the first option, which is the rental side of it. So looking at that $2.6 million overall total amount, that accounts for that eight-year service life expectation. So right now, our current quotes that we've seen, we have about a $2,500 per grader cost per month, which gives us about 44 hours. For every additional hour, we're looking at about $120 per hour, and using that 400 to 500-hour timeframe for each grader, we're looking at a monthly cost for the six graders about $62,520, and about $375,000 for the season. Now after eight years, again, that's where our $2.6 million comes from. Switching over to the lease side of it, if we were to go ahead and do a three-year lease extension, and right now the lease rates we're seeing are anywhere between 5.7% to 7.3%, we would expect to go ahead and get on average about a $38,000 per year per grader lease amount, which puts us at $232,000 a year roughly for the six graders. Now, what this would also do is at the end of that three years, it would put another buyout option in front of us, so we're looking at an additional $126,000 per grader to go ahead and own these pieces of equipment after that time, which brings us to a grand total of $1.4 million. Now, the option that we've chosen, and again, just kind of maintaining fiscal responsibility here, we are looking at a buyout option. Now this puts the graders in our control and our ownership at about $197,000 per grader at the end of this year. This equates out to about $1.186 million for the six graders. What we would also like to do is just to ensure that we, again, save on maintenance costs for the next few years anyways. We were also opting to do a three-year warranty, which equates out to about $12,000 per grader or $72,000 per year. And again, as I mentioned, factoring in the $156,000 budget that we currently have, the additional warranty, we're looking to go ahead and get on these pieces of equipment as well as a buyout, it ends up bringing us to the lease total, which is the reason why we've chosen it today for the $1.2 million. At this time, I'll open it up to any questions.
Are there any questions, Mr. Banfield? Mike?
So forgive me, I'm, I'm doing math live here, which isn't always the best thing. Brian, can you, can you tell me right now, on the, on the current lease that we've got in place, how would that equate with the lease rates that we're seeing here? Where are we at today?
So the current lease rates right now, we're noticing, my apologies, Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, the current lease rates we're seeing today, which were basically from 2019, were 3.28%.
Okay, so that's, that's the difference that we're seeing today. So the one thing that strikes me a little bit is that going from option one to two isn't a crazy jump. If we went the direction of option two instead with the idea that maybe lease rates come back down, does, and maybe my main question here is, does option two take all of that into account at once? Is it saying lease for three more years, then do the buyout at the end of those three at the 126 number? Is that how that 14, 1455 is calculated?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, it does. So right now, we would look at extending the lease for three total years, locking in the current rates that we're seeing today, and then having to make the same decision at that three-year point whether or not we were going to do the buyout at that point, or, which is again factoring in that $1.4 million total that you're seeing there, or it could actually cut that down even further if we were to go ahead and do a buyout at that time. Lease extension, I would have to go ahead and follow up with the supplier to see if that would even be possible at that point, just because of the age of the equipment. The other stuff, the other item I would like to highlight here, though, is with these, with the lease itself, we are capped at 3,500 hours. So if that, say, we had three rough snow seasons and we did exceed the 500 hours that we're anticipating, we may be without coverage for these pieces of equipment.
Okay, then can I continue? So then, one, one other question I've got then, so when we're talking about the purchasing the warranty, you know, we, we went out and toured the shop this week, or last week, you know, great staff out there doing all kinds of amazing things, taking care of equipment that we've got on the books. Is, would this, would the warranties that are in place for something like this, would that be a catastrophic engine failure or something along those lines? Because we're going to take care of most of the basic maintenance, is that right? I mean, what types of things would we shut it down, wait for warranty work? Because I imagine that's not fast either.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, you're correct. So the routine maintenance would continue to happen on our end, and we do end up doing serviceability checks on an annual basis, but the catastrophic failures would be the items that would take these out of commission, and we would be working with our supplier to go ahead and get those replaced or fixed in this case.
Rob?
Hey, Brian. Quick question, and maybe this one isn't for you, but it looks like to pay for this, we're taking it out of the equipment budget from 2024, is that correct? So last year, or 2024 budget, we budgeted 4.77 million for equipment. Is this number included in that, or is this on top of that? And then if we're buying this, is our 2025 budget for equipment purchases going to go down?
I believe that would be a question for finance.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller. So this would be increasing our 2024 budget using reserves. As of right now, I don't believe it would be decreasing our 2025 budget because buying these out was not anticipated during the budget season. We had budgeted that 156,000 for potentially extending the lease, and then rates have changed drastically, so.
Okay.
Hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Scott?
Brian, on the, the option two, the lease part of that, you could actually lease those for three years and turn them in and start over at that point too, correct?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Samuelson, that is correct. We could go ahead and just turn them over and not choose to do the buyout option.
Mike?
So just to maybe continue with where, where Scott was headed, or maybe not, but so, given the choice right now, we've, at least recently, our, our decision has been the lease side, because in low interest environment, in low rate environments, that, that's probably a good thing because you're, you're getting newer equipment sooner. It's, it's sort of like the decision that you would make at home with a pickup, right? So you can get something newer more often, and you not have the long-term maintenance questions that can come, and we've seen that with other types of equipment, what can show up. And so that, would you agree that that, that's probably is preferable until the rates get out of hand, which is maybe where we are now?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, for me, making that decision would be difficult because I can't predict the future rates.
Right.
But as it currently sits, sits right now with the higher interest rates, as well as the increased cost for pieces of equipment, I will also caveat this with, equipment when we purchased, each grader was $291,000 roughly when we purchased it in 2019. The prices for them have skyrocketed to $409,000. That is another factor for consideration when it comes to this, but I, I would say yes. The rates would be a big consideration for me.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Brian, at the end of the buy, if we, if we go the buyout route and we have an eight-year life expectancy, what's, what's the future of these after eight years? We just throw them in a scrap pile? Do, do they have some, some sort of reclamation value? Have a backup grader on hand? What's, what's the plan?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Pittner, we currently do have eight graders in our fleet. We are working through the fleet management plan itself to go ahead and do a phase-in type schedule. The service- The service life of these would be dependent on the maintenance that we need to, that maintenance that is going to be performed over the next eight years, to determine at what interval we would need to go ahead and trade these pieces of equipment out. At this time, with this type of buyout, I believe we would have a considerable amount of equity put into these. The 2013 and the 2015 graders that we currently own right now, we have roughly about a 95,000 in equity in the older model and $115,000 in equity in the newer one.
Mike?
One other thing, another question, is there, do we get any new operating efficiencies with a new version? Is there anything that's getting better? Are they more efficient, fuel-efficient, bigger? You know, are we cutting 14 feet wide instead of 12? What are, is there anything that we gain from getting a new piece of equipment?
Mayor Ross, Alderman, bless him, not to the best of my knowledge.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, please call the rule.
Janser.
We have a motion. What are we?
Yeah, I thought we had.
Yes, Alderman Janser and Alderman Olson motion to approve the budget amendment to buy out the sixth grader.
It would be approved, the buyout option?
Yep. Correct. Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Bless him.
No.
Fuller.
No.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 7.4, City Council directed, direction on the downtown quiet zone. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Lisa?
I would move approval on alternate one.
We have a motion for approval on alternate one. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Is there any discussion? Mike?
Well, this one, to me, is quite difficult. You know, if I had been on council when the first project came through, it may have been difficult for me to vote yes on it, especially for this phase, when, if I'm understanding it right, we're going from 85% coverage to now 90. So this is a very small incremental adjustment, and at a million dollars, it seems iffy. Now at three, it seems downright impossible where we're sitting. You know, diverting reserves to go there, and I realize that option one that we're talking about right now is phasing that out, trying to find funding sources, begging the state, looking for federal dollars, whatever that is. To me, this is just a heavy load across the board at $3 million to get 5% more coverage in the quiet zone. It's a tough one overall.
Rob?
And to continue with Mike, what Mike was saying, I mean, on top of that, you know, they're asking us to pay for their rail signals, which have now almost doubled or tripled in cost. I mean, you know, why won't they eat any of this? It isn't our fault that it has taken this long necessarily, is it? I mean, I think Canadian Pacific should be responsible for helping us with some of this, if we're going to do it, but at $3 million, that's too heavy of a lift. We don't have any other money to do that.
Lisa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with both Alderman, bless him, and Fuller. $3 million is too much for us to spend at this point, but I want to leave the option open to see if there are other funding sources, or if we're willing, you know, if Canadian Pacific is willing to work with us. By just kind of cutting it off tonight, we lose all those options and those possibilities. So, that is the reason I'm recommending alternate one, because it just, it leaves it on the table, and maybe at some point, there will be an option that works for us. I know that people that live downtown and business owners downtown would like to see this. They have voiced that in the past, and so this is still just giving us that opportunity to continue to look for ways to make it work.
Mr. Mayor?
Mark?
Just sort of to concur with what Alderman Olson said, this is a desirable quality of life improvement for the community, and although, and we've spent on the previous quiet zone project to try to reach that end. The fact that this has increased in cost, like a whole bunch of things have, I don't think we should simply abandon the idea, and so I'll vote to support the motion.
Rob?
Just one question, on option alternate two, stop the project as currently proposed, wouldn't that give us the same ability to go back to CP and everybody and find out if they're willing to help us a little more, rather than continuing to phase the project over time?
Lance?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Fuller, one thing to understand about quiet zones is, is there 100% locally driven and funded? So, the railroad will never participate in this project. So if we want to do it, it's going to be 100% city-funded, or the portions of it that we can find federal aid or state-funded grants for, that's all going to be on us. So no matter what we can try to find and cobble together over time, the railroad will never participate in this project.
Well, that's a pretty good deal for them then, since we're going to replace all their stuff, isn't it?
It's a great deal for them, but it's a tough deal for us. So just keep that in mind, if we'd ever bring this back, it's going to be.
So they're never going to help us, no matter what we say or ask?
The only thing they will participate on is the closing of crossings. They're always going to participate in the closing of crossings, because that reduces risk to them.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Yeah, so Lance, just continue with what you said then. Can you envision any world, in the best of cases, where we phase this out, and we go after, whether it's North Dakota funds, federal funds, whatever it is, where we get even close to what the million dollars was to begin with? I mean, we're talking small nibbling at the 3 million end of this, not back towards where the city was going to be.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, bless him, honestly, I don't think so, and only because the cost of signals have gone up so much, even our own traffic signals. You know, just a few years ago, we could install a traffic signal in Minot for 250, and maybe a really expensive one was, you know, $300,000, and now we're paying almost close to $600,000. So, we felt that pressure, now the railroad's feeling that pressure, and so when we put the estimate together a few years ago for this project, the railroad was telling us the new signals downtown were going to cost 250 to 300,000. I think the four quad gate signal at Third Street was somewhere around 400,000, and now that's an $800,000 signal. So, I don't think that cost is going to come down.
If I can continue, so when we talk about the first option here being phased, what are, are we talking two or three years, and those continue to go up, and so 3 million becomes 3.8? I mean, we're losing ground probably on that, even with the phased approach, so our cost just continues to skyrocket over time.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, bless him, what my plan is, is like I mentioned in my memo here, the state does have Third Street and Central Avenue, the roadway panels in the state's plan for rough crossing federal funds. Of course, the railroad didn't mention that to us, right? They wanted us to pay for that, and so we checked in with the DOT, and they had that in the plan, so that's cost, that's federally eligible, but it's not eligible on a quiet zone project. Those are not eligible funds. So that's why I wanted to pull this project back a little bit and try to get those federal funds to pay for some of these improvements. You know, it's not, I wish it was more, but it's something, right? So we can try to get that improvement done. Amtrak came to us out of the blue here a couple months ago and said they want to do some improvements over by the Amtrak crossing. We'll see what we can get out of that project, if that moves forward. It's also the only unsignalized crossing in the entire city of Minot. There might be a safety project out there that we can try to get some additional funds for, we'll see, but it has such a low volume of vehicle traffic, I just don't know if it can qualify for anything, and that's really been the sticking point in the past, is there's really just not a lot of vehicle traffic to qualify for anything. So we'll see what we can do, but it's not going to get it close to a million dollars again.
Rob?
And this is just a comment, I understand what you were saying, Mark, about it's a quality of life thing for people downtown. You know, doesn't sound like CP's going to help us at all, doesn't sound like we could get much state or federal funding. You know, we have a lot of things in the city of Minot that we need to fix and work on right now. You know, we talk about all these things at these city council meetings. I would rather take $3 million and put it towards the police station, or the renovations or something that they need, than spend it on this quiet zone right now. I mean, this can be relooked at down the road, maybe when prices of things come back to normal and everything else has kind of fixed itself in our country, so I won't be supporting this.
Lisa?
Thank you. So Lance, if it is approved tonight, what happens? I never want to be the one that wastes staff time. So would you be putting a lot of effort into it, or would we just kind of wait and see what happens?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Olson, if we go with option one, as recommended, then what we'll do is we'll keep working with DOT to make sure that those crossing improvements are completed, and really that causes the public a lot of issues. We want to make sure that that's moving ahead. We're also going to work with the railroad and with DOT to see what we can do at the Amtrak station, to see what grants are possible over there and try to continue that along, and then we'll also keep working with the DOT and the railroad for the closure at Maple Street, because we had that in the works. We're trying to see where this was all going to play out, and then we'll bring that agreement back to council, because we also, we had federal funds lined up for that closure and CPKC funds for that closure. So, we'll package that together in some sort of bid package and execute that, so at least we have that closure taken care of.
All right, thank you.
Mike?
So just one last thing to add, I mean, I, you know, I acknowledge that they're likely, you know, they're likely developers and people working on different projects downtown that were moving ahead with whatever they had going, private element of certain buildings or whatever that was, and you know, that's an issue, and it's not a good place for us to be, to be switching gears. I might be okay if it was, hey, it's 1.4 million instead of one, but we're talking triple the price at this point, and our contribution to that, you know, being a huge part of it, I just can't support it, I can't see doing that, not in the environment we're in right now.
Harold?
Lance, while you're up here, so previously in the 2024 budget, the council budgeted a million dollars towards the quiet zone project. So, under option one, how, if at all, would that funding be used? And what would that accomplish? And I'm guessing that what we'd be focusing on is improving the crossings and the safety of those intersections within our community, but it won't qualify as a quiet zone, which means the horns of the railroad, as they're going through town, will continue to be used, but we won't have the costs that are coming associated with this. So if you can answer the question of where that million dollars goes, and then to kind of follow up on Mr. Fuller's statement earlier, and I agree that maybe there's some better uses of $3 million if we have it, but right now, what we're talking about is a million dollars has already been budgeted, that difference of a million to 3 million has not been budgeted or identified at this point, and so we don't have 3 million to divert somewhere else. What we have is that million, which is why I am asking the question of what happens with that million dollars the council's already budgeted underneath option one that's been recommended and is on the table for consideration tonight.
Well, right now, Mr. City Manager, the improvements that are, we're working on with the DOT, it's a 90-10 cost split, and the 10% is being picked up either by the railroad or by the state. So, those rough crossing funds, the city does not have a cost share right now, so right now, it wouldn't cost us anything. Potential uses for that million dollars, if you wanted to use that towards potential quiet zone improvements, you could apply it towards improvements at the Amtrak station or at one of the other crossings, or they could go back into the, I think this is being paid for by hub city funds, if I remember right, or sales tax. So those funds would become available again for another use.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lance, you said that Amtrak wants to make some improvements. Can you share kind of what those are? What do those trigger? What do they have to account for in their project? And the reason I ask that, we have developers that want to develop projects, Trinity built a hospital, there's requirements for them to improve public infrastructure for safety reasons, signals, things like that. Are there any things like that that are triggered from those crossings that Amtrak would have to have a cost share in, because they're increasing traffic or increasing pedestrian traffic? Anything like that?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, their improvements are going to be, they're fairly small and they're fairly limited. They have an ADA grant that they received from a federal partner, and so they're going to make ADA upgrades in the station, and then exterior to their platform, some ADA parking improvements, and then they wanted to install a sidewalk from the station to the city sidewalk network. We also wanted to install a sidewalk from the city sidewalk network to the station. We really didn't think about it until we were talking with the library director, and she had mentioned that there's a lot of people that come from the station over the library during stopovers, and so we wanted to install that improvement, which necessitated some of the improvements that increased the cost of this project. However, depending on how this project was going to move forward, some of those improvements may or may not happen. If we're going to pause that, we'll have to talk with Amtrak and see what they want to do now. They might pull those improvements off of their improvement list.
Then, if I may continue, if they pull those improvements off, then that would maybe potentially pull some of our improvements off as far as sidewalks, some of the costs that we didn't factor in there? Any idea what those dollar amount on those costs are?
It's probably anywhere from 50 to 75,000.
Harold?
On that note, in a previous community I served in, we had a similar upgrade with an Amtrak station, ADA compliance issues, those kinds of things, so it is something they're doing nationally in all their stations, but I will also note that in that community, the city didn't provide any funding towards that project, Amtrak paid for all of it.
Any further discussion? Scott?
I'll just make a comment that I, the amount is too much with other things that we have to do, and I won't support it.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just final comment, I guess, as well, it's the elephant in the room, and how do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. And if we've got a million bucks that we budgeted towards this project, and like City Manager had stated, there's a $2 million gap, and if we can work through that over the next handful of years and phase this project out, I think we, it's a project that we started, I think it's a project worth finishing, and finding that path forward with staff, and whether it's DOT or the state or federal funding, I'm going to support it. And, I can.
Go ahead, yep, continue.
Just to be clear, this is in the agenda as a downtown quiet zone. This doesn't affect just downtown, there are residential areas that are affected by the quiet zone, correct?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Alderman Pittner, it's a little bit deceiving here when I say downtown quiet zone, it's, the improvements are focused on downtown, but really what it does is it eliminates CPKC train horns throughout the city, because the improvements, or the quiet zone actually extend all the way to Eighth Avenue, and then by us removing Maple Street, it does take out all of the CPKC train crossings.
And I just wanted to make that point clear, this isn't just a downtown project, this isn't just for downtown business owners or downtown residents, this does affect the community as a whole. Just wanted to make that point very clear.
Mark?
I would concur with that, I can attest to the fact that on South Hill by Edison School, you can hear them very clearly.
One more thing, so I think if I read it right, and hopefully I did, we're going from 85% to 90% completion on this. What's left in the 10%? So if we did all of this, everything that's contemplated in this project, what train horns would remain at that point?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, bless him, the only crossing we would have left in city limits or near city limits would be the BNSF crossing at 27th Street by the fairgrounds. That's the only crossing that's not in a quiet zone.
Okay, seeing, any other questions for Lance? Thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? We have a motion to approve alternate one and a second. Seeing no further discussion, please call the rule.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
No.
Bless him?
No.
Fuller?
No.
Janser?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Moving on to item 7.5, the wildlife hazard removal and drainage improvement, phase three construction administration contract and grant. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval.
We have a motion by Mark, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Any discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second, please call the rule.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessam.
Fuller.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Moving on to item 7.6, the regional carbon dioxide storage facility budget amendment. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Lisa. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Mark. Discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Mark, uh, Mike, sorry.
Um, and I don't know, maybe Jason can answer this question quick. And part of it's because it's fresh in my mind after going through the water plant. So thank you for that. So one of the, one of the big things that we talked about when we were at the water plant was the 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 difference that bringing NOZ water was going to bring to plant operations, especially lime. I mean, that's the key one. I just wondered if I just want to make sure that it doesn't have a similar impact here. I mean, this is looking at pH, right? Carbon dioxide does. So what what impact, if any, will bringing NOZ water have on the amount of CO2 that we'll need going forward?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, so that was my original thought, too. If 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 we reduce lime by 80%, that CO2 would be similar. So we we actually went back and checked in with like Dickinson, Southwest Water, City of Mandan, and Bismarck, who are currently using lake water. And their their CO2 feed rate is pretty similar to ours. So, you know, using lime, you still raise the pH up to, you know, 11-ish. So it still has to be brought down with about the same amount of CO2. So the reduction in in lime doesn't reduce the CO2 comparatively.
And if I can continue, Jason. So just just to refresh my mind, this this is a hedge against supply problems, whatever that is, right? And and that, you know, I know there's there's a lot of talk around the state and really around the country about CO2 sequestration, all the other crazy things that are out there. So we're, you know, we're creating government mandates to put it in the ground. At the same time, we're helping fund a storage facility. Seems strange, but the point of it is, we're making sure that there aren't that there aren't disruptions in our supply that could directly affect our water. And so how, you know, if we have a big storage facility there, how do you get it to Minot then? Is it trucked up at that point if it's if we ever did need to tap into that reserve?
Yeah. So we've, our our current supplier of CO2 is American Welding and Gas. And we've checked with them. When they can't get product at DGC down in Beulah, they would go to Bismarck and pick up product for us from from our reserve storage. So our current trucking firm would would just, we would use them and they would just grab our product from Bismarck and bring it up to us.
And just just one more then. So what would what would cause Dakota Gas to have a problem? What kind of disruption? I mean, the plant's gone or what would?
You know, they've they've been up and operational for, I don't know, probably in the neighborhood of three to five years. They seem to go down just about every summer at peak time. If you remember, over the course of the last three years, we've had some some water restrictions and probably two of those, it's been due to CO2 shortage. So it's it's a pretty, it's a critical item. It's one of those that we can't continue to treat water without unless we want to send out a, you know, a lower quality product. So it's pretty important that we have it.
Any other questions of Jason since he's up here? Rob.
Thank you. Jason, so you just touched on, so we've had a couple CO2 shortages in the last, I mean, how many years?
Probably in the last three.
Three years? Are we expecting another CO2 shortage? And and then on top of that, wouldn't it be easier if we had our own storage facility here in Minot rather than someplace else?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Fuller, absolutely. I guess the benefit of this is Bismarck is currently in the middle of a plant expansion, and they're actually looking at putting in a CO2 tank as part of their project. So making this a regional project, we were actually able to take this to the Department of Water Resources, and we got a 60% grant for it. Our other option would be to wait for Phase Three of NOZ expansion at the plant. We've we've really just just started to kick off design. So we're probably a year and a half from completion of design. So under under that scenario, we wouldn't have a CO2 tank available and ready in Minot for probably about two and a half years, maybe maybe a little bit longer. So this just speeds up the timeline. And yeah, we're we kind of gained some cost efficiencies using Bismarck. You know, they they already have a pad there. They already have security fencing, you know. So so that's some infrastructure that doesn't have to be built somewhere else.
Continue.
You just brought it up. So 60% DWRs, is that 60% of the 590? Or are 590 is after the 60%?
Our five, our 590 is after the 60%.
Thank you.
Any other questions of Jason? Scott.
So Jason, you talked about a possibility about, you know, looking at part of going to membrane as far as, you know, instead of lime. What does that make? Do you still need CO2?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Samuelson, the, there's generally not a pH adjustment using membranes. So the more water that we would take through membranes would reduce CO2 usage. That that idea is really in its infancy. We don't, we we haven't gotten there yet if that's going to be the preferred alternative or not. So.
Thank you, Jason.
Yeah.
Is there any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor and a second. Please call the roll.
Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessam.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Janser. Motion passes.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 7.7, Logistics Park of North Dakota Grant Contract Amendment. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Mark.
I move we approve the recommendation.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Lisa. Discussion. Any discussion? Rob.
So I guess I just have a couple of questions. So this appears to be another federally funded project that's over budget, and we got to spend more money again to fix. Is there a reason? And it sounds like is it FRA? Is there a reason FRA isn't willing to help us with some of these costs since all the delays and the overages were caused by them? I mean, have we had that discussion with them at all?
I think I'm going to defer to either Lance as our engineer that's been working on this project, or this is also done in cooperation with MACDC, and maybe Breck or Mr. Lyman can help answer some of those questions.
Mr. Mayor and Alderman Fuller, I haven't directly talked with FRA, perhaps the chamber has through through DOT. So it's been a kind of a partner project with all of us working together. We got this Chrissy grant here a number of years ago. And with the typical, typically with federal grants, they are capped at a at a dollar amount, just like our federal construction projects are always capped at a federal dollar amount. And after that, it's it's all on the local share. Unfortunately, sometimes this happens with with federal reviews. I've had it happen on some of my projects before where you don't really know who you're going to get. And it kind of is what it is, unfortunately. And I think on this project, this review team caused our project partners a lot of issues. And there's, there's really just no way around it, unfortunately. And so it costs us a lot of money. But we're obligated now to finish this project, and and that's kind of where we're at.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions of Lance? Thank you, Lance.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve. Please call the roll.
Janser. Olson.
Yes.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
No.
Blessam.
Yes.
Fuller.
No.
Motion pass.
Motion passes. Moving on to item 7.8, second reading ordinance update, Chapter Six, the PON and Secondhand Ordinance. What are the wishes of the council?
Move approval.
We have a motion by Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Lisa. Discussion. Mike.
So when this, when this came on the first reading, I think I asked the question of had we gotten any feedback from any of the, any of the, those that would be impacted from it? I think the answer at that time was, well, yes, they don't seem to be feeling too bad about it. It's part of what they have to do. It's got to get into the system. Well, I think we've gotten a little bit more of that feedback, at least I have. I guess I'll just ask the question again. Do we, have we gotten enough feedback that this is the right direction? We're asking this specific group to pay for software that we require, right, to track the, to track the goods that are coming through the businesses. And so I just, once again, I want to, I'll probably ask that question a lot as we go through stuff. What has the feedback been from the users that are being asked to pick up a new bill? And in this case, it sounds like after it was read once, then we, that's when we got the feedback. So I guess I'll just throw it out again. Have we gotten any other feedback beyond that?
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Blessam, since the last council meeting, staff has received one email communication from one of the local jewelry stores with regards to concerns much along the line what you're you're talking about. I have not heard any other feedback from anyone, any of the other licensed users at this point.
And just if I can continue, just just to be clear again, that is what we're talking about. We're, we've got new software that we're putting in place, right? And so this fee is meant to help cover the the cost of that system, make sure that it's in place.
Mr. Sundheim can help. It's not new software. It's that the cost of the current software has doubled in cost since the...
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, yeah, that's correct. This, it's existing software. And so the cost has has risen for us in order to use it. I know part of also this is combining the multiple licenses into one to make it a little more streamlined for the actual end user as well.
Mark, did you have?
I was just going to say that, I mean, and there's a, there's a choice that the business can make, which is that if they don't want to, if they don't want to be engaged in using or in in buying used goods and so forth, they don't have to get the, pay the fee and and do it. When when this licensing requirement first came out, that's exactly what the business I was working for did. We just decided we're not going to direct buy used property. And, you know, you can still do trade-ins. You can still, you can still engage in in the majority of the actions. But you just decide that you're not going to buy used stuff from somebody who walks in with it in their hand.
Any other comments, questions? Any further discussion?
Mayor, members of the council, are you familiar with the software that the police department's referencing? It's called Leads Online. And Captain Sundheim might be able to describe it better than I do. But just in my experience prosecuting in municipal court, we'll see a lot of petty theft offenses that are verified, where they verify that goods are stolen through Leads Online. So it's, it's something that I've seen used fairly frequently. It's not an uncommonly used program. Captain Sundheim, do you kind of want to describe what Leads Online is and your experience using it?
Mayor Ross, members of the council, that's correct. And so it's not just for our community as well, but it is a national database as well for a lot of secondhand dealerships. So potentially, we can track stolen property, not just for our community, but it could be stolen property from our community that's sold somewhere else, anywhere that would be using that software, which is common for all secondhand dealerships.
So, yeah, I think I think that sounds great. I think it's exactly the software we should be using. And I guess my question is, who should pay for it? As a society, do we pay for it? Or do, does the end user who wants to participate in that business, I think, to Mark's point, I think, and again, I think it's a good discussion, and this might be the exact right way to do it.
Harold.
And if if I understand the work that the staff has done correctly, the city is not passing on the full cost of this software to the licensors. The city is still subsidizing significantly the costs. We don't anticipate, even even if the council approves this tonight, it's not going to generate enough revenue to cover the costs of the software, and the city is still paying a significant share of that software cost.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Pittner.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Samuelson.
Yes.
Blessam.
Yes.
Fuller.
Yes.
Janser.
Yes.
Olson.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Motion passes. Moving on to item number eight, personal appearances. Now is the opportunity for those who wish to address the council to come forward. I would ask, out of respect for others who wish to speak, to limit your comments to five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Alderman. My name is Tom Warasaki. Live at 3748 White Pine Circle. Actually, I want to talk about the franchise fee that's proposed in the city budget for next year. And actually, what I'd like to start out was to say is, in my opinion, this franchise fee is just another tax. It's another way of calling a tax to everybody that uses utilities, pardon me, within the city of Minot. I've done a few calculations, and I could be wrong, because honestly, there's been very little publicly published about this franchise fee. There's a little bit. So what I've done is, so the proposed budget would save somewhere between 22 and 23 dollars per year for somebody that owns a $100,000 house. But I believe that that same person would spend over $100 a year in this franchise tax on their utilities. So the people that have the least amount of money in Minot are going to pay a greater share than somebody that, under this scenario, you'd have to have about a $470,000 house to break even. So the people that own a million dollar house save money. But the people that have a $100,000 house, particularly if their house is not efficient, they're going to spend more money in their utilities, and then the franchise tax will even be greater on them. So as you go through your budgets, I would actually ask the city to reconsider this, because we publicly said you're going to save 22, 23 dollars per 100,000. But I believe you're going to spend way more money than that in the franchise tax. Thank you.
Thank you. Now is an opportunity for those who wish to address the council to step forward. Seeing none, we will move on to item number nine. That is miscellaneous and discussion items, item 9.1, the downtown ornamental lighting ordinance.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilman. My name is Bob Thomas. I have operated a law practice downtown for 38 years. My wife and I purchased the old Walters Building on Main Street in 2008. After the flood in 2011, we renovated the upper couple floors, upper two floors into a large apartment. We've lived there ever since. We love it downtown. And I continue to operate my business on the main floor. I'm here tonight to urge the city council to review the downtown association's rooftop lights project and to adopt some regular procedures to consider whether the lights are appropriate for downtown, whether they conform to modern standards for commercial buildings and public spaces, whether they may be harmful to the public, harmful to public safety, whether the lights conform to the dark sky standards that were adopted by Mr. Billingsley. These lights do not conform to modern standards for commercial buildings or public spaces, not appropriate for downtown. They are harmful to public safety downtown, and they do not comply to the dark sky standards that Mr. Billingsley has adopted. And we're talking about the lighting, the rooftop lighting above 16 feet. I have special interest in these lights because they're aimed directly into my living room and my dining room and my bedroom. From less than 100 feet away, LED lights are very directional, and they're very bright. They're not like anything, you know, that's, any kind of ornamental lighting that's ever been used in downtown. Unfortunately, Mr. Billingsley and the downtown association, they choose to view the lights from the street level only. They look up at them, you know, 30, 40 feet up, and they think, oh, they're not so bad. But the lights actually project straight into my living room and my dining room and my bedroom. And it's, it's not just that they're bright, but they flash every night. They change colors. They simulate movement. It's kind of like when you're coming into a It's kind of like when you're coming into an airport, you know, and there's a, you know, strobing lights leading you to the runway. This is what we have to look at from our residential apartment every night. And it's not fair and it's not considerate and it's not legal. Lights are far brighter and more disruptive than any previous downtown ornamental lighting. In legal terms, they're a visual nuisance. They constitute light trespass and light pollution and they may also violate the Americans with Disabilities Act. These lights or this type of lighting is forbidden in public spaces and other communities and it's forbidden by the dark sky rules, which the city says they're following. The downtown association installed these lights last fall without providing Mr. Billingsley with any plans, any specifications, or engineering information. There were no permits, there was no public notice, and there was no formal city approval. This is a big project. They're talking about transforming all of downtown Minot with this sort of lighting without any oversight from the city. The rooftop, the rooftop lights make downtown less safe. I overheard the comments by Alderman Blessam at the last meeting, well, just close your shades. Well, forcing people to close their shades is not particularly safe when you live downtown. And it's not... It, it's like if your neighbor is making a lot of noise and you go over and complain about the noise and they say, well, why don't you put in some earplugs? It's not, you know, I shouldn't have to close my shades. When we moved downtown 12 years ago, one of the greatest things about our place, other than the, you know, the 10-foot ceilings, were these big windows that allowed us to look out onto Main Street. And we shouldn't have to keep our shades closed in the evening in order to accommodate these lights, which like I said, are not promoting safety downtown. And they're, they interfere, they interfere with security cameras. Our security cameras don't work anymore. We don't, we can't get notifications because of the flashing and the strobing. So just the whole concept of these lights is, I don't think, well thought out. Downtown includes churches, we, there are banks, there are schools, there are professional offices like mine, funeral homes, there are other businesses and we don't really want to be located in the middle of a party district. I, I don't understand what, what the, what, what the community stands to benefit by lighting up downtown in the middle of the night. There's already a problem downtown with crime and vandalism and creating a party zone on Main Street in the middle of the night when none of the businesses are even open. It just doesn't make any sense. The city put a lot of planning and money into the traditional downtown streetscape. I know I attended the public meetings about the downtown streetscape. No one ever mentioned anything about putting flashing lights on the top of all the buildings. Mr. Billingsley correctly, as I said, adopted these dark sky principles to determine if the rooftop lights are appropriate. I agree with him. That's what should be followed. But then he went on to apply those principles incorrectly. He's not a lighting engineer. And as I said, he tried to measure or said he measured the lights from the street level. He didn't even recognize the fact that these lights are very different when they're coming straight at you than when you look at them, you know, from down below. Any lighting engineer or qualified expert will tell you that unshielded lights, unshielded LED lights do not comply with dark sky rules. Mr. Billingsley, and again, he's in charge of enforcement, that's why I keep referring to him, but Mr. Billingsley should require the downtown association to submit plans and specifications that can be reviewed and approved by a qualified engineer and in turn approved by you folks. You do good work. You look at both sides of, and, and all of the information necessary to make a good decision. You don't even have the specifications for this lighting. You don't have any engineering reports at all for this lighting. It hasn't been vetted from a technical standpoint. It hasn't been vetted from a legal standpoint. And they're proposing to put more lights up downtown. They're raising money as we speak to put up more lights downtown and it's never been vetted properly. The whole project has never been vetted properly. I don't want to take up too much of your time. I, I already have probably, but I did write a, a brief statement that I included in the agenda and I hope you'll read it. It's only a couple of pages long, but it includes my other thoughts about why this rooftop lighting project is such a terrible idea. I hope you'll read it. It's pretty concise. My written statement also includes a link to the dark sky rules. It's just one page, the dark sky rules. It's very informative. Please read it. Help you understand what other communities are doing when it comes to outdoor lighting. There's also a photo link in there, just shows you what these lights look like from my living room window. You know, keep in mind that the, it's just cell phone video and it, it doesn't really capture how bright these LEDs really are, but click on that photo link if, if you want some idea of how intrusive and obnoxious this lighting is. Mr. Mayor, city council members, you, you should require a more thorough process for evaluating this downtown lighting project and the proposed additional lighting. Maybe you could give it to the planning commission and have them go through their process to review the specs, but whatever you decide to do, the lights should be turned off now, at least until they're approved by a qualified engineer. That's all I'm asking. That's all I've ever asked for, is just to have a qualified engineer look at this and they will tell you this is, these are terrible lights and they're not appropriate under modern standards and they're certainly not appropriate under the dark sky rules. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
Mayor Ross, members of council, my name is Chad Wright. I'm representing the downtown business and professional association. I'd like to ask Derek Hackett to come up and speak in regards to Pretty Lights.
Mr. Mayor, city council, thanks for giving me this opportunity. First and foremost, I'd like to kind of address what I repeatedly heard and you repeatedly heard about dark sky ordinances. To my knowledge, the city of Minot doesn't have dark sky ordinances. We have an ordinance about ornamental lighting in our downtown district and other land use developments. Usually you see dark sky ordinances in HOA rules or in places like Arizona, Montana, places that are very rural or generally where people go to get away from city life, where they can see the sky and enjoy the sky. One reason why I used dark sky ordinances to communicate with Mr. Billingsley was to give him an idea of what these lights are. So my company, which we're entering our 16th season here and we owe a great, a great dear deal of gratitude to the downtown Minot to get us started about 13 years ago. We install lights temporary, permanent at events and on top of structures from rugby North Dakota as far west as Whitefish, Montana. We've dealt with HOAs, we've dealt with other municipal governments. Never have we had really this kind of pushback on something like this. And we have these lights specifically because they do conform to a lot of dark sky ordinances. We, you see a lot of that out in, in the Denver area, which is where our lights are manufactured. One thing Mr. Thomas mentioned was directions, like LEDs are directional. He's entirely correct on that. Our lights, which is called the OLO lighting system, are angled downward. Every diode in that light is angled downward about 115 degrees. So even faced out, they're pointing downwards at a slight angle to help diffuse some of the outward emissions. I understand that blinking and chasing and brightness is a thing, but we don't have actual dark sky ordinances, as far as I know, in city ordinances. I do want to commend city staff, both Mr. Billingsley, community, in his community development department, the city attorney's staff and city manager Stuart for being so easy to work with and understanding of our issue. We, we installed these lights prior to knowing there was a 16-feet threshold in the downtown Minot ordinance that we needed to comply with. That's why we reached out, gave the information about our dark sky ordinance lights and how they actually fit within a lot of those ordinances in other communities. So Mr. Billingsley can make an informed decision on his decision for the lights that were indeed already, already installed. What we seem to have here is an issue with one line of the land development ordinance in section 3110, paragraph D, number three, where it is a, there's an exemption to ornamental lighting in Minot, specifically in the downtown business district for central business district zoned buildings up to 16 feet. 16 feet is when Mr. Billingsley needs to actually step in and make a determination of whether or not he feels that they, they can meet a certain criteria, which is why he put in an 11 o'clock curfew on those lights. In my opinion, as a contractor for this project for downtown, Minot resident, this ordinance seems to defy a little bit of logic for me with the simple fact that when you are in a downtown setting, generally these urban settings, you kind of expect brightness. You expect to see lights downtown. In fact, if you look at each corner, you have 24-foot streetlights, all pointing down, but all above the threshold of where these lights actually are. Those are put there for safety. So the assertion that these are a nuisance for safety seems to defy my logic as well. I'm interested to hear some of those arguments further, but we know that lights actually help visibility and help produce more safe, reasonable areas. Ultimately, what we feel about some of the ordinances is we're happy to work with the city to make this work. We want to do well by our clients, which is the downtown business and professionals association that are eager to chomp at the bit and eager to continue to execute the vision that the city's actually been going forward with for about 10 years now in revitalizing downtown. Hundreds of millions of dollars have been spent on infrastructure. It has been spent moving city hall downtown. We want to continue that progress. In fact, the city even allows reimbursement for lights just like this in the facade improvement program that has seen, in my opinion, great success across downtown in really modernizing and revitalizing some of the buildings that we get to look at from the street level downtown. And the purpose, one of the purposes of that downtown facade improvement program is, in an FAQ I found online, is to create an experiential shopping environment by improving the attractiveness and marketability of downtown properties. And that is to create an experimental shopping environment. We feel that these lights can do that. These lights are here to help set a vibe, a mood, and ultimately try to make market, downtown a little bit more marketable to those who maybe aren't aware of the efforts the city and the community have made to revitalize our central business district. One last note on the ordinance is it, the way I understand it, and of course, Mr. Billingsley can correct me if I'm wrong here because I'm, I'm working from memory and that's, just ask my wife, that is terrifying for me. This only affects CBD zoned properties, meaning any building to the east, any building to the north, any building to the south of this building that we stand in would fit in this 16-foot criteria of needing approval for this lighting. But the building that we stand in right now, because it's zoned public, does not have to conform to that rule. Meaning, this is kind of selectively purposed because if it is truly about the location of everything, it doesn't seem to follow that kind of mentality when associating it with other businesses. I also own with my partners, the old Farmers Union elevator, which is just over on Third Street. The way I understand the rules in the ordinance is we can put candy cane lights all the way up to 126 feet in the air and still be compliant in the ordinance as it's written, just because we're zoned heavy industrial instead of central business district. I would be happy to answer any specific questions you have now that I have exhausted like eight and a half minutes of your time.
Are there any questions of Derek? Lisa.
Thank you. This might be a question for you Derek or perhaps Chad. When the, the buildings were selected to put the, the first strings of lights up, were all the business or all, excuse me, all the building owners notified and was, was permission given by all of those building owners?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Olson, yes.
And how would that continue if you were able to move forward with this lighting project? If there were a building owner, and I'm, I'm just guessing that maybe Mr. Thomas wouldn't agree to that, how would that work?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Olson, it wouldn't, we just would, we would just skip over that building.
Okay, thank you.
Harold.
Does someone respond to that? This isn't my first time talking about downtown lighting in a community.
Yeah, mine either.
Yeah. So the, the DPPA has no legal authority to put infrastructure on somebody else's privately owned structure. So the only ones that have the authority to do that is the business or the property owner themselves. So the DPPA is working in cooperation with these downtown business owners to get permission to put these lights on. They're volunteering to help raise money and pay the costs so the business, the property owner doesn't have to pay those costs. But the DPPA has no authority to come and put these lights on a downtown property without agreement of that property owner. And that would be consistent in law across the country. It's a, it's a property right and it's a property decision in that regard.
Thank you.
Let's go to Rob, Rob Asvers. Mike, I'll look at you.
I guess real quick, just my thoughts on this. This is, this seems to be a whose property rights are more important type question. And I don't know if, if that's really in our purview to decide. I mean, you have a private business owner and private property owner who wants to put lights in their house and somebody across the street who doesn't want that. If we go down this route and we tell them downtown Minot Business Association that they can't do that or this is an issue, what becomes next? Are we not going to be able to put up Christmas lights? Or is somebody in my cul-de-sac going to be able to tell me my lights are on too loud or too long at night? What about rooftop bars and, and, and that, that have lights and noise? Are we going to have complaints where we're going to have to shut them down too? I, to me, this doesn't make much sense as, as far as what we're, what we're talking about here.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Derek.
Mr. Mayor, Alderman Fuller, that is the exact thing that I'm worried about. As I mentioned, we've been in business for 16 years. We've, we operate in Minot, Bismarck, Mandan, Whitefish, everything in between. If this continues, I'm concerned about our business as maintaining solvency because if 16 feet's the threshold, I do a lot of houses because they're tall and other people can't do it. So if this is something that creeps, it can effectively kill my business model.
Mike?
So maybe for Steph more than anyone else. So I'm, I'm trying to look, dug into the land ordinance here. So is Mr. Hackett correct? Is this a zoning question? Because I think in the ordinance, it says Minot downtown area. It doesn't actually say zoning or anything.
And Alderman Blessam, members of the council, I do have, so I'm plugged into Dia 7. If our public information officer can display the screen so that the council members can kind of see what's going on here. We do regulate lighting in our land development ordinance and the section that I have pulled up here is section D, which is exemptions from the provisions of the, the lighting provisions. Subsection three talks about the ornamental or thematic lighting in the downtown. Subsection 3 talks about the ornamental or thematic lighting in the downtown area, but it also applies to planned unit developments, partnering projects with the Minot Park District and other special projects. It's very broadly worded language here. Provided that such lights do not exceed 16 feet in height, ornamental lights in excess of 16 feet may be approved for specific design purposes by the community development director. Now, I don't recall being involved in the drafting of these specific ordinances, but I think our community development director is standing by and could provide some more context for this particular, this language.
Evening, Mayor, members of the council. The land development ordinance was adopted by the city council in, I believe, April of 2021. So it's about three and a half years old now. It went through the zoning ordinance steering committee where it was reviewed. This was language that was put together most likely by our, the consultant we had hired to help write the ordinance for us. This was the first time I've been tasked with having to enforce this section of the ordinance. Mr. Hackett was kind enough to call me to ask whether or not he needed permission from me to give a permit or give the ability to place this lighting on these buildings. I did look at the ordinance, and after reading it, it says it may be approved by the community development director. That gives me the ability to prove it. That's how I interpret the word "may" rather than "shall." And since there was a complaining party to this matter, I chose to look into the issue more deeply. I consulted with the DPPA. I read several emails from the complainant, Mr. Thomas. I did some research and tried to research what other cities had done in the past, reviewed the dark sky standards. And after about three weeks of deliberation and thinking, I came up with my decision that I, that obviously, I know my decision did not please either party. Do I support beautification in our downtown? Of course I do. But is it my job to also protect the public from nuisances that could occur in our city as well? Yes, I have to do that as well. So I wanted to be able to allow DPPA to still have these lights in place, use them during the evening hours when they're appropriate. But I chose the 11 o'clock time period because that's typically when our noise ordinance kicks in. If noises are considered a nuisance after 11, and I believe that lights should be considered a nuisance as well at that hour as well. I did get some confirmation from Mr. Hackett that the, that everything here meets the dark sky standards I had placed in my letter. Another thing I really want to let everyone know is that I did meet with the DPPA in April of this year. And Mayor Ross, you attended that meeting as well, and I appreciate you attending that meeting as a witness. I made it very clear to DPPA, and I know I made this clear to Derek and to Mr. Wright on the phone as well, that in the future, they need to come to my office to get my permission to place more lighting up. And I'm not going to stop them from putting lighting up. But if I receive complaints like this one, I'll investigate the complaint. And if I have to, I'll place some conditions on that lighting as well in the future. But I really want to see downtown grow. I want to see it beautified. I want to work with the DPPA. I want to work with the property owners that live downtown. I was placed in a no win situation here, and I had, I didn't, I made the best decision I can make with the information I had available to me and trying to accommodate the needs and wants of both parties. With that, I stand available for your questions.
If I can just continue. So Brian, I appreciate that very much. And actually, one of the places that I wanted to go with my line of questioning and comments is, I think this is a ridiculous place to put Brian. I mean, that, putting him in this position to have to make that decision makes no sense. That's our role, I mean, really. So if we want it in ordinance, then we've got to clean it up and make sure that that's there, and then Brian's there to enforce, or if we don't. But I guess, Steph, if I can continue with where I was headed then. So that's the first part, is the zoning question. That, to me, it's not clear, because it doesn't refer to any zoning. It just says a general area of downtown.
That's correct. It's very broadly worded language that's here.
Okay.
But I would characterize it as a zoning issue because it's loosely describing areas that are considered different zones of the city. Planned unit developments, those are creatures that are specifically created in our land development ordinance. So I think characterizing it as a zoning issue is accurate.
So, yeah, so if I can continue. So Mr. Hackett, is he correct that he actually couldn't put lights all the way up then? Because, I mean, I would consider that downtown.
I would agree. I think he needs to, he would have to ask for permission from Brian for lighting that's in excess of 16 feet downtown.
So then if I can continue, Mr. Mayor. So, okay, so now we head into a different direction. Because that, that, that part of the ordinance is in D, which is exemptions. So what this is saying is, all that other stuff I talked about above doesn't apply in these situations. So in downtown, the other stuff does not apply. And the other stuff, as I read it, if you go up further, two pages before that or a page before that, the unacceptable and acceptable light fixtures is what that's referring to, in my mind. The type of lights that the Downtown Business Association has worked with property owners on down there don't fit either one, as far as I can tell. It's, they're not in either acceptable or unacceptable. And then if you go up one more page, it says, "This section is not intended to prevent the use of materials or techniques not specifically mentioned." So in my opinion, they don't even need an exemption because it's not explicitly excluded. We're not even into section D, because, which doesn't even apply to Brian's oversight in the first place. So we've got multiple layers of the ordinance, I think, at least not being clear and possibly throwing this whole question out because they're not even violating the ordinance.
And Mayor may I respond?
Sure.
And, and that's possible. That's one way to look at this. I wasn't involved in the initial decisions that were made here in regards to the lighting ordinance. I'm not going to claim myself to be any type of lighting expert. All we do is look at the information that's presented to our office.
Harold?
May I, Mr. Mayor? So I think what we're seeing tonight illustrates exactly the intentions of why this language was put in the ordinance. When you look at these, yes, it is broad. Because the intent here is anytime that you're getting a mixed use of commercial and residential usage, there, sometimes those uses don't mix very well together. Ornamental lighting is one of those, just for all the reasons that Mr. Thomas stated in his concerns. And so this, this is in there as a layer that when those issues arise, the community development director, by ordinance, has been granted authority by the council through this policy to make those changes and adaptations to help meld that and balance that together. The reason it's set at 16 feet is because that puts you over that two-story mark. And it's traditional that in these types of uses, you're going to have commercial use on the, on the main levels, and you're going to have residential uses on the upper floors. And so that 16-foot is that trigger point that is pretty standard in these buildings that now we're starting to get lights up into the residential uses. And that's the intent of this. Now, whether or not the council wants to put more clarification in here and clear this up, or whether or not they want to remove this section completely and just allow ornamental lighting, I guess that's a choice of the council here going forward. But the reason that was put in there was to be able, and as the staff interprets this ordinance and as it was presented to council and was approved back in 2021, is we're really not regulating ornamental lighting, with exception of when you start getting into these areas of downtown and the PUDs, where you start exceeding that two-story, where you're having residents up top, that commonly lights are complained about by residents. And we need to be able to have a way to help regulate that when those issues occur. And so that's the intent of the ordinances here. That's what's going on. I also want to step back a little bit and clarify a little bit with regards to the dark sky ordinances. The city of Minot has never officially adopted dark sky ordinances. There are communities that have. Mr. Hackett referred to several of those, Montana, Arizona, those types of things, areas where you go to get out away from everything and you want to enjoy the evenings and see the stars. That's hard to do in Minot right now because in order for us to enforce that, we'd have to regulate all of our streetlights and everything else to be able to get to that standpoint. And so we don't officially have a dark sky ordinance to enforce. However, when this complaint came up, the most restrictive and researched ordinances and policies out there are the dark sky ordinances. And so we went to that, referred to that, because at least then we have some basis point to begin to assess what's allowable, what's not allowable, you know, those types of things. How many lumens these lights can put out, you know, et cetera, et cetera. I'll also follow up with regards to not having an engineer or electrician review this. A year and a half ago, two years ago, we moved electrical inspections to the state electrical board. And so the ones who regulate these types of electrical issues within the city of Minot is the state electrical board. We forwarded the concerns of the constituent to the state electrical board, who then responded that they did not see anything with regards to, these were unsafe or improperly engineered or anything. They're basically a plug-and-play light, didn't require engineering standards, those kinds of things. And the state electrical board did not see any issues or concerns with these lights. The only issue is the local ordinance about whether or not we're regulating it above or below 16 feet. So there are a lot of communities that try to build attraction in their downtowns. You could look at downtown Kansas City during Christmas and the Plaza lights, you know. Here, we have some, the DPPA and some downtown business owners that are trying to make downtown Minot a destination place and are using some concepts that are being applied across the country to help do that. So, but again, to Alderman Blessin's point, staff gets kind of caught in the middle of this, right? We're trying to support the Downtown Business Association and try and create a destination point in a downtown that's more attractive. But at the same time, we're trying to be mindful of our residents that live, particularly during the evenings downtown, and we're trying to play that balance. I believe the ordinance helps us do that. It gives us a trigger point that we can do that. But sometimes this gets a little bit messy as we talk through this. But anyway, I'll be quiet.
Mayor Ross?
Yes?
I would like to respond to Alderman Blessin's question about downtown area. There are a couple other sections in the land development ordinance that talk about downtown area. When I see that, I interpret that as a central business district. So any properties that are zoned central business district technically are in the downtown area. So this section of code would only apply to the central business district. And any planned unit developments have been approved by the city, such as like the tracks would be a good example. That's, if that's ever built out, you know, these rules could apply to a building, to a site like that as well. So I just wanted to answer that question for you.
Can I continue? So just to continue then, this is, this is kind of a unique one because the association is involved. But the way I'm understanding this now is each, each property owner has given sort of their approval for their building to be included. And so I guess I look at it, Brian, and my question would be, if Mr. Thomas is upset and there are a set of buildings directly across from him that are impacting him, what does that say about two blocks up? Because that owner of that building two blocks up doesn't have anybody complaining about theirs. And why would something that applies to the one directly across the street, why would that matter up there? And do we want those blanket decisions going across downtown when actually legally, these are individual decisions being made by each property owner?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessin, if you go to the letter that I wrote on March 26, this, my order only applies to the buildings listed in the fourth paragraph, the ornamental lighting, 16 feet and higher, and higher, placed on buildings located at 101, 107, 109, 111, 113, 117, 119, and 121 Main Street is hereby approved. It only applies, my order only applies to those buildings. Elsewhere in the downtown area, I'm going to allow the DPPA to put up the lighting. If I receive complaints, I'll handle those complaints at that time and possibly add conditions to their, to my, to my order to allow that lighting. So I don't want to be overly bureaucratic in this situation. I want to allow the DPPA to put up the lighting. If I receive complaints, I'll investigate it and possibly take action.
So just one last comment, Brian. I apologize, I've read this before and I'd forgotten that was in there. But I just got to say, under these circumstances, I think you did exactly what you should have. I mean, that, the ordinance asks you to rule on it, and you did it in the least intrusive way you could. And I think you should be applauded for that. I think that's a good thing. I just, I think overall, it raises a whole lot of questions about, as Alderman Fuller was saying, whose rights supersede and all the pieces that go along with that. So none of it's easy, there's no question about that. And so I think the real question is, is do we, is this something that we do feel that requires an ordinance adjustment to be more clear? Or kind of to the city manager's point, is it actually working as designed? Because it's solving, it's working through this specific issue, and it can't contemplate all the other issues that could come on.
Mr. Mayor? Mark, then, Rob?
Yeah, this is, this is a bit of a tough thing. And it makes me think of two things from the past. And it relates to property rights. And I think Alderman Fuller kind of put his finger on it. You know, there was an incident back a number of years ago where a guy had a place kind of out in the, in the territorial zone and had a picture window that looked out on a hayfield. And been that way for 30 years. And he'd lived there since he built the house. Well, during the oil boom, the guy that owned that hayfield across the road, which was zoned commercial, had the opportunity to put in a machine building and a, you know, truck service kind of place, which had lights and, you know, all kinds of activity. And the guy who owned the house was unhappy about that. And, but both have property rights. And so the guy who wanted to develop the piece of land had that right. And the guy who owned the house, if he really liked that view, should have bought the property that he was looking at. The other thing was a person owned a house out in Green Acres, kind of on the last street. I think at the time, it was Metalark. And as the development of Dakota Square kicked off and as, over time, a decade or so, property out there developed. And pretty soon, behind that house was a grocery store and a strip mall and a bank. And it used to all be wheat fields. Those people weren't happy about that. And, and so obviously, the people who owned the wheat field had the right to develop that property. And, and so I think what that says is, it kind of goes back to what Alderman Fuller brought up, is, you know, whose, whose property rights need protection here? And what reasonable steps do each party need to take to have a workable situation in the circumstance that city manager talked about, where you've got some kind of things that are rubbing up against each other that need some buffering or need some, some kind of accommodation? And so, you know, I don't know whether changing the ordinance is going to fix this or not. I think, I think it's a situation we're going to continue to encounter and have to deal with.
Rob?
This question is more for Stephanie. So Stephanie, assuming that we leave the ordinance and we make changes to it, does taking the height requirement out fix or change any of that?
Alderman Fuller, members of the council, I'm not sure. I mean, the height varies downtown. So I mean, I'm not sure that varying the height requirement would necessarily make a huge difference in this.
But I'm just saying, if, if we say the 16-foot, anything above that, we have a say. And we just take 16 feet out and say, hey, ornamental lights downtown at the discretion of the property owner, whatever. If they become an issue, that's when Brian gets involved. But if we take the 16-foot thing out, there's no argument about whether you can put lights at whatever height you want. I mean...
Yes, if you took the Alderman Fuller, if you took the 16-foot threshold out, then that's just not a consideration that would be taken into consideration with the applicability of that particular paragraph.
And my other question with that is, Brian, I think in this instance, you had them shutting the lights off at around 11 o'clock. Is that accurate? So in the summer, when it's light until 10:30, these guys have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars or thousands of dollars, whatever it may be, into their properties, but they can't even use them? Is that, I mean, I understand where the situation you were put in.
Again, Mayor Ross, Alderman Fuller, I based that decision on our noise ordinance and that that should be in the quiet hours, that should be the hours of the night when noises should be at a lower level.
when noises should be at a lower level, lighting shouldn't be too bright to, to disturb people from trying to get a good night's rest. Um, that's, that's the decision that I made. I, I know we have late sunsets here in the summer, but we certainly have early sunsets here in the winter, so, and the flip side, in the winter months, they probably will have the enjoyment of about six hours of light time or so in that, that neighborhood, so I, I, I thought of that, that was part of my decision-making process.
Did we ask, and again, I know Mr. Thomas has, has written a number of letters, did we ask him though on the alternate side? I mean, we're asking them to do something, did we ask him to pull his blinds down at ten o'clock, maybe to help the situation or anything?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessings, no, that's none of my business, what he does with his private property.
Okay, thank you.
Mike?
So, uh, with that in mind, what, Brian, if you had to say right now, with the intent of where we're headed with downtown, with the businesses that are there, whether it's restaurants, bars, whatever is there, is, is an eleven PM curfew what we're intending in downtown? Or are we intending for sort of nightlife in the heart of our city to continue until bars close?
Um, Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessings, I think the only businesses that are open downtown after eleven are probably the, the bars and restaurants, especially the, the bars for sure, if not the bars and restaurants, but, um, you know, that, there's not much open downtown after eleven, there's not a lot of foot traffic obviously downtown after eleven either, so I, I thought that was a good time of night and again, I, I based my decision on consistency with the noise ordinance.
Yeah, and I, just to continue real quick, again, I, I, I don't, I actually think you did about what was best with that whole setup and it, but to me, it really just illustrates that that's a heck of a lot to put on one, even a, a good city leader, that's a lot to put on one person to make that kinda determination, especially, and, and again, I know that this, this one was particularly difficult because a whole bunch of it was done. I mean, it's one thing to not approve a plan, but it's a whole other one to say, oh, by the way, that tens of thousands, that's already up on the buildings, pull it down. So again, I, I'm acknowledging that it's a difficult spot, so, um, I guess, Mr. Mayor, where, where, where we sit today, if we do, if, I mean, this is a good discussion, but if we do nothing, the letter that Brian has sent, um, I guess it would be the expectation of the city attorney that, that that would be enforced and that would be, that we continue?
Yes, that would, that would be the status quo in this particular situation, is that the letter that Mr. Billingsley issued, and I, and I apologize, I was looking through that briefly, um, through my emails, but I'm, I'm not seeing that I have a copy of that readily available to share with you.
Of the letter?
Yes.
It's, it's in our agenda, it's, it's in here. So, so, Mr. Mayor, I guess, and, and I, this is part that we haven't hit yet since we've come into council, I guess what I would like to ask, I'd like to see us consider a change to this ordinance. As I, as I laid out, I don't, I don't even think this applies, but that's a different question. I think if you go into the gray areas, maybe you can get it to, but I would ask that this be prepared, that we end under section D exemptions, that we end item three after the word "and other special projects," period, and we cut the remainder of that, which it, it just gives an exemption for downtown, is what it does. And, and at least then we've got something to consider if we feel this is something that should get adjusted and cleared up, because right now, that would remove all the discretion in the, the development director's court and it wouldn't need to be done. So do you, do you get what I'm saying there? The second line of item three, ending after other special projects, put a period and remove the rest.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, that, that maybe needs more talking through because ultimately, if you do that, how I would interpret that is exemption is, is that ornamental lighting is not allowed downtown. What we're saying here with this is, it's allowed downtown, but we only put stipulations on it if it's above sixteen feet. I think if you take everything else out after that, it's, it's reading as ornamental lighting is allowed everywhere and else, everywhere else, so if you wanna put Christmas lights on your, on your home, you can do that, ornamental lighting, lighting is allowed, but there's an exemption to that allowance for the downtowns and the PUDs and those kinds of things. And I'm, I'm fearful that this could be interpreted as ornamental lighting is not allowed downtown and I don't think that's what you're trying to accomplish.
Certainly not, and, but I think, I mean, that, maybe that illustrates as good as anything else, that this whole part of the ordinance doesn't work then. Like, we're exempting things that aren't even in the list because, you know, the LED lights that, that Mr. Hackett's team had put together don't even, don't even need to be exempted because they're not even in the list. So I guess what I'm trying to get to is, do we, can we do something to remove the development director from the equation so that we don't have that decision being made and also leave ourselves in a position where these are by default exempted? I mean, the other option is you can remove item three altogether and they're in by default because they're not listed anywhere, which is what the very beginning of the section talks about.
Yeah, and if you, if you remove the entirety of item three, then the interpretation would be as ornamental allowing, ornamental lighting is allowed and there is no regulations and when people like Mr. Thomas come and complain, uh, staff has no authority to intervene and do anything, it's, it's allowed by ordinance and, and there's nothing that we can do to help.
Do we wanna, uh, do we wanna direct Brian to come back with a recommendation of, a change if necessary? Is that something?
I think that would be helpful.
I, as, being the one who's in, I mean, if, if, if you feel there is, just come back with a recommendation and, and, and put it on the action item, then we'll, uh, we'll vote it up or vote it down.
Mayor Ross, um, I can certainly do that to, to get information from the council, uh, but the, the, uh, land development ordinance is required to go through the planning commission first for recommended, public hearing and recommendation before you actually take action at the city council level. So, at, at the next meeting, I can provide some, some proposed changes to this, maybe give you a couple of different options that you can choose from, and then you can give staff direction on how to take it from there, then we can set up the public hearings with planning commission and then eventually take it back to this body for final, uh, approval.
Thank you. Rob?
One thing I just wanted to say or ask Harold, so you had talked just a second ago about if we take that line three completely out, the city has no say in this, um, because ornamental lighting is approved or okayed. Isn't that the way it should be? Why is, I mean, shouldn't this be between two private property owners dealing with it and talking about it rather than getting the city involved and us having to, to figure this out?
Mayor Alderman Fuller, ultimately, that's the decision of the council, that's what you're elected to do. Ultimately, you're trying to decide between residents that have different opinions, what's in the best interest of the community as a whole, and that's what this ordinance reflects. Uh, when this ordinance was passed, the city council at that time wanted to maintain the ability to intervene. Uh, should there be lighting that interferes or causes, uh, problems for, uh, residents in these areas? If you wanna turn that off, you're welcome to do that. I guess my question would be kinda responding back to Alderman Blessings' thing is, or the, the mayor's suggestion of having staff bring back a recommendation. At this point with tonight's conversation, I don't know what to bring back to you.
Right.
Are we becoming more restrictive with the lighting or are we becoming less restrictive with lighting in these areas? I don't have a clear direction to work with Brian on what to bring back to you to change. And again, my personal opinion is, as I stated tonight, this ordinance right now is working the way it's supposed to. It, when these conflicts happen, they get attention, we bring it to either staff or in worst case scenarios, we, we up it to the council and you give us direction of, in essence, whose property right is going to, uh, succeed in, in, in this dispute at this point, uh, because you're not gonna be able to make both of them happy. So, and, and again, it's, is, which is more important, the, the right of the individual with his property and not have the light come to his property or the overarching, what the DBPA is trying to do and trying to create a better environment downtown and for our community as a whole to make our downtown more vibrant and a better attraction, uh, that's ultimately the council's decision and I guess I would ask for clarification from the council, which direction you would like us to go.
And, Mr. Mayor, that, that actually was, that actually was where I was headed, which was to try to clear up item three, to remove that discretion and be clear that the ornamental lighting is, is allowed. And, you know, I, are there, I guess maybe the question would be, are there other sections in the law that, that if there was a nuisance that came up, um, you know, I don't know that I get to that with this, I know Mr. Thomas is asking for a lot more to be looked at, engineering specs, all these different pieces. In my mind, he sort of won the argument and the development director moved in his direction quite a ways, actually. Um, and so I realized that he may not be satisfied with that answer, maybe he'd rather have him turned off at eight or whatever, or not there at all, I get that, but the point is, is that we've only gone that direction. Um, there really hasn't been any give in the other direction, so that's where I was headed was actually to give staff, uh, direction to bring us back something that would remove the requirement and remove the development director from the, from the equation.
Bob?
Just one more minute, thank you for indulging me. I, I have a solution, I think, that accommodates all of the viewpoints here, and that is talk to a lighting engineer. This is technical stuff. Believe it or not, they do have lighting that is not offensive. Uh, they should, they've even, this LED lighting is quite extraordinary, you don't find it elsewhere. Um, it's not common to find on commercial buildings, it is not common to find in public spaces anywhere. But if you are gonna put ornamental lighting on, you can shield it. Uh, and a lighting engineer, I'm not a lighting engineer, neither is Mr. Billingsley, either are you folks, but there are lighting engineers out there that can tell you how to do this properly, uh, and in a, the least intrusive way where you're not harming people or creating, uh, public safety issues. Downtown is, after dark, is not always a very safe place. I have a family, my teenage son comes and goes after dark, my wife comes and goes, we need to keep an eye out at what's going on, especially after dark. I have, vandalism is a significant problem. I have spent more than ten thousand dollars just on repairing vandalism on my building. You drive up and down Main Street, you see broken windows. You do not wanna be telling residents who live downtown to close their shades at night. That's what the criminals and the, and the vandals would love to see happen. So a lot of intoxicated people downtown and they, every building across the street in the last couple of summers, I've reported property crimes or violent crimes in progress. You don't want me to close my windows, trust me. It's not safe. So, uh, the solution I'm proposing is talk to a lighting engineer, get some good ideas about how to put lighting on these buildings so that it's not intrusive and, uh, and it, it can be ornamental without irritating and unreasonably interfering with the rights of other property owners. That's the legal context of this. You can't unreasonably interfere with the property rights of others. So, um, thank you for letting me, uh...
Yes, Stephanie.
If I may, um, Mr. Thomas, before you leave, so I've pulled up the model lighting ordinance from Park City, Utah, that I believe you submitted to the council here tonight. Um, is this the type of ordinance that you would find acceptable for your...
This was actually rec, it was recommended to me by lighting experts. They said, I said, I gotta go and talk in front of the city council, what do I do? And they said, well, here's an ordinance that, um, they had a problem like this in Park City, Utah, and this is what they did in Park City. And by the way, it was dark sky experts that, uh, referred that, uh, model ordinance to me, but, um, like I said, there is lighting out there that is not so offensive. This stuff that went up across the street from me is terrible. It's offensive and none of you would tolerate it a hundred feet outside your living room windows. Thank you.
Briefly, Mr. Hackett.
I don't, I'm not interested in a back and forth with Mr. Thomas, I wanna be respectful of your time and I wanna be respectful of his concerns too, like, that's not what I'm up here, but I do want, I'm a, I'm a fan of accuracy and one, two things I would like to correct in that previous statement is that you don't see these on any, any other commercial buildings. That's where we do most of our business. In fact, I'll give you an example. The Mandan Progress Organization took under huge effort in their downtown with public funds to put my lights on public buildings. It has shown, I haven't seen the data, data, but they just today, um, are adding a hundred fifty more feet to this public space that they do. If you've ever seen what they do downtown during, with Christmas lights, they have immersive lights on the ground, they have our OELO system up on the, the rooftops and along about four, one, one, what do we have? Five? Four buildings right now, now adding five hundred and fifty more feet. So we do see this on commercial properties, almost exclusively, in fact, it's more rare to see it on residential properties. So that was, that was inaccurate. Another thing I would like to say is, uh, it seems a little bit arbitrary to call them not safe. In fact, I do have a client in Bismarck that just, um, put in these lighting on her home, they, they're programmable, each bulb is programmable. She wanted it to be programmed so the lights above the doors could be li, uh, brighter at night and dimmer in other places, cause she's in an HOA and had similar spats with, with that organization to actually do that. So those are two things that I wanted to make sure we're a little bit more clear. These are very, very, very common in commercial spaces, very common in urban settings. We have cities in this state that are investing in this actively, including our own, and they are, nothing is actually more deterrent to crime than more lights. We even put these on our own building because there's a lot of, um, nefarious activity over in that dark corner of downtown on, uh, on northeast of Third Street, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, oh.
Well, I, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, my question is, what is our authority tonight? Cause it, it sounds like we probably could send this back to city staff and we could get some recommendations. Um, I feel like we're making this a really, really big situation where we're in reality just being asked to kind of determine, um, uh, a cutoff time and the type of lights, whether they strobe or they don't strobe, um, so that the DBPA has an answer on whether or not they can move forward, Mr. Thomas can have an idea of what to expect downtown. And so do we have authority this evening to just address that? And I think it essentially comes down to Mr. Billingsley's recommendations. Can we override Mr. Billingsley's recommendations or does he have the sole authority to make that recommendation?
Alderman Olson and council, you can override Mr. Billingsley's recommendations.
Mayor Ross, Alderwoman Olson, uh, the ordinance gives me the authority to, to administer the situation. Um, I think council's only recourse in this matter would be to authorize staff to make amendments to the code. Uh, there is nothing in here that says that this decision is appealable in this section, there's nothing here that says whatever decision I make is appealable to the council. That could be an option for the council, uh, if, in terms of an amendment to this code where maybe any decisions I make can be appealed to the council for review and, and a decision, but, uh, as of right now, there's nothing in the code that gives the, the council the authority to override my decision.
Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? Oh, yes, Denise.
Mayor, council members, Denise Linbo, I reside at eight oh six Fifth Street Northeast in Minut. Um, I've owned my business downtown for thirty-one years now, um, and have been a member of the downtown association for quite a few of those. Um, we do not take any city funding, all of the money that we're raising for putting up these lights and our events and other projects, we raise ourselves through dues, through fundraising, um, other projects that we have. Um, as far as the lights themselves, um, like Derek said, we have tried to dim the lights for Mr. Thomas, we have stopped the strobing of the lights for him. The city lights, the street lights, if you drive downtown on a dark night through downtown Minut, the street lights are a hundred times brighter than these lights on the buildings. Um, and they're also above sixteen feet, as we know. I have a sister-in-law who has a street light that is shining right in her window and she had to put blinds up so that street light does not shine in her window. There's other businesses now in city that would probably have to be under these same rules. Blue on Broadway has lights like this, Beaver Ridge, um, up on North Hill has these same type of lights, so are they gonna be under the same rules as what the downtown... So are they going to be under the same rules as what the downtown buildings are going to be under? Pretty Lights is a commercial company. They know what they're doing. They've been doing it for a very long time. We've also, under Mr. Thomas's request, City Electrical has been coming, has come in from Bismarck to basically put the stamp of approval on these lights. We would just like a final say with this. The threatening of lawsuits. You know, it puts a lot of stress on the things that we're trying to do downtown. We're trying to create a vibrant, fun atmosphere downtown. Our livelihoods depend on it. We are not under the quote dignified businesses, as Mr. Thomas would say. We're not a funeral home. I'm not an accountant. I'm not, you know, a law firm. I have a business that thrives on events. Everything we do is for entertaining my customers. And same with several of the other businesses downtown. So for us to have a safe environment, a fun environment, an environment that invites in younger people that we want to keep in the city, that's what we're striving to do as a downtown board, which I'm a member of the downtown board also. So that is what I'd like to say. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one quick question, actually not for Denise, it's actually for Brian. So if that's correct, if Blue on Broadway and Beaver Ridge both have those same types of lights, do they have a letter authorizing them for certain times and days?
Mayor Ross, Alderman Blessam, those projects were built before this ordinance was adopted. They're more than likely grandfathered in.
Would that be the default position to the city attorney? Is that, or should they have a letter on file as well with a decision under this ordinance?
I mean, I would defer to the community and economic development director. He administers this particular ordinance. So if his record showed that those are grandfathered in, I mean, that's what we'd have to rely on.
I believe Blue on Broadway was built 2020, and Beaver Ridge was built probably long before I was here, 10 years ago, maybe, somewhere in that range. Were either of those PUDs? I know that Blue on Broadway was a PUD, correct. But like I said, it was built before the ordinance was adopted. I don't know about Beaver Ridge.
How about Trinity? Trinity has lights all the way across the top of their building out there.
Again, that was another project built before the ordinance. They started construction about 2017, 2018.
But it finished well after the ordinance was in place.
Well, you go by the date that the project starts construction. I mean, that's something we can't enforce, I don't think. I can take a look into it. I don't know if they were approved through a PUD or not. I don't know. That was approved before my time here. I'd have to do some research on it. Okay?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Harold. After hearing all this conversation here for a while, which I've appreciated, it's been an interesting exercise in civics. But I guess in my personal opinion, what I'm leaning towards is perhaps we remove this from the ordinance and we let it be a civil matter between the property owners, the same as we would with an encroachment of a tree or a fence or any of those kinds of things. Maybe it's just best for the city to not be in the middle of it.
Thank you. Okay.
I think the airport director wanted to speak, so I'd like to hear what you had to say.
Thank you for bringing that up. I started waiting.
I wanted to speak on this matter because we had earlier, I think it was last year, maybe, we had a request from Epic to install a light on top of the M building that would be rotating and flashing and such like that. This was at a time that Trinity was still open. They operated their helipad downtown. That would be not beneficial to the public safety due to the fact that it replicates, similar to the airport beacon, and such types of things. So before we completely eliminate this particular section of the ordinance, I think we should look at making sure that we're protecting our airspace from lights or fixtures that replicate maybe an airport or an airstrip type of lighting and prohibiting that unless it is an actual airstrip or helipad or something to that nature. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think it's time we move on to item 9.2 on the agenda, the Minot Area Council of the Arts presentation.
Do you have our presentation for the?
I believe Jennifer has a, I sent her the link, so yep, she was pulling it up. Just took a second.
All right.
Cool.
Honorable members of the Minot City Council, Mayor Ross, thank you for your service and commitment to making Minot a great place to live. We are the Minot Area Council of the Arts and are pleased to present our biannual report outlining who we are and what we do and how the arts elevate the quality of life for all Minot residents. My name is Tanya Vitko, and this is Miles Barkum. We recently began as the new co-executive directors of the Minot Area Council of the Arts in late March of this year. We're committed to fostering a thriving arts community that enriches our city's character, stimulates economic growth, and enhances the overall well-being of our community. Through this report, we aim to showcase the significant impact of arts and culture on Minot, highlighting our accomplishments and challenges and strategic goals for the future. Established in 1973, the Minot Area Council of the Arts has been a cornerstone of our community for over 50 years, bringing people together through the arts and fostering a thriving cultural landscape. We're a diverse group of 11 board members, two dedicated staff, that's us, and an AmeriCorps member through the SIR Space and Planning Council. We're a dedicated team committed to making the arts accessible and enriching for everyone in Minot. So what we do. The Minot Area Council of Arts is a 501(c)(3) membership organization committed to serving Minot area artists, arts organizations, and the community at large. Founded in 1973, the council is dedicated to supporting and enriching Minot's arts ecosystems by facilitating programs, services, and events that invite local artists to collaborate in growing cities' flourishing artist scenes. The council's membership includes individual artists, community supporters, businesses, and organizations, with nearly every arts and cultural organization within the Minot and surrounding area. So why the arts matter. The arts serve as a powerful force in shaping our community, contributing significantly to placemaking, economic growth, and community cohesion. Placemaking through the arts helps to enhance the overall quality of life for residents and visitors. Arts transform spaces into unique and memorable experiences and places. Public art displays and performances contribute to a city's character and leave a lasting impression on visitors and residents alike. The economic impact of the arts helps to create and support a diverse range of jobs, from artists and performers to art administrators, technicians, and event planners. Art and cultural attractions draw tourists, boosting local economies through hotel stays, dining, shopping, and entertainment spending. Creative industries often lead to the development of new businesses, fostering innovation and entrepreneurship. The arts help to empower individuals and groups through education and participation, building confidence and self-esteem. The arts have a significant impact on stress reduction and confidence. And they help release stress and connection with the community and a platform for individual expression. The arts create a desirable, well-rounded community that attracts residents and creates a welcoming environment for new residents. The arts have an educational impact by enhancing critical thinking, problem-solving, and creativity. Arts education develops visual spatial skills and collaborative skills. The arts are more than just entertainment. They are essential components of thriving communities, economics, and individuals. By investing in the arts, we invest in the well-being of our society and create a more vibrant and inclusive society.
Okay, and last October, the Americans for the Arts published the results of their AEP-6, which is a nationwide survey of spending by nonprofit art and cultural organizations and the event-related spending by their audiences. The survey broke down by 373 regions, and the Minot area results showed a boom for the arts in the area. Here are some of their findings. The nonprofit arts and cultural organizations and businesses is a $20.8 million industry in the Minot region alone. They employ people locally, purchase goods and services from within the community, are members of the chambers of commerce, and attract tourists to their regions. In the Minot region, arts and culture provides for over 452 full-time equivalent jobs. The arts drive commerce to local businesses. Unlike most industries, the arts leverage significant amounts of event-related spending by their audience. In 2023, Minot Arts attendees spent $31.96 per person, on average, per event. Beyond the cost of admission on items such as meals, parking, and lodging provided vital income for local businesses. Arts travelers are ideal tourists. They stay longer and spend more to seek out authentic cultural experiences. One-third of attendees nationwide travel from outside of the county in which they live and spend an average of $48 per person. On national average, every public dollar invested in the arts creates an $11 return. These are our programs. The Minot Area Council of the Arts offers a variety of programs to enrich the community through the arts. Key initiatives are the Arts in the City, Artist After Hours, Artworks in Minot, MACAC, and Worldfest. Arts in the City is our, the big thing we've been working on this summer. We started in March, and we had about two weeks to solidify all the dates for 18 summer events and get all the sponsorships and all that kind of stuff. So that's been, we started in late March, and it's been, it's been a push.
The majority of our time is planning this summer.
So the Arts in the City aims to enhance public spaces with art, fostering community engagement and cultural vibrancy by engaging diverse community members of all ages through live music performances, featured artists, and community engagement. And throughout the summer of 2024, as I said, we organize and facilitate 18 free outdoor, all-ages events divided between Oak Park and downtown Minot on Main Street. This is the 39th year in the parks and the fourth year downtown for the series. Attendance is growing every year, and to date, there have been 4,800 attendees just this summer. And there are four events remaining downtown. We had to submit this before we had this week, so it was, we had another 550 of this last Thursday, and it was a great time. Mayor Ross was there. It was good to see you. Each event has a featured local artist showing their work and a concert featuring local music talents. We've had over 35 vendors and nonprofit booths join us just over this summer. Arts in the City is sponsored by the Minot Park District and 14 businesses and individuals donating their money and time and efforts to make this happen. Arts in the City has become a community staple that all, that a lot of area residents look forward to every summer. It brings attention and beautification and fun to downtown, creating that atmosphere that the downtown businesses are looking for. And it brings free all-ages fun events to the parks. This next event is Thursday at 5:30 and is a collaboration with Independence, Inc. There will be nine local musicians performing, and it will also give Independence, Inc., a local nonprofit, a chance to spotlight their organization in a public venue. And we hope to see you all there. Artist's Afford Hours is another one of our programs. It's a social event for artists and non-artists alike. There are featured artists, music performances, and collaborative art projects in a casual, social setting. These typically occur monthly, and we do them at the Carnegie Center. Artworks in Minot is a program that partners with local businesses and artists to showcase original artwork in locations around Minot. This program increases the visibility of local art while providing our participating sponsors with rotating artwork for their offices and meeting spaces. MACAC, in addition to supporting our members and their special projects, the Minot Area Council of the Arts is committed to fostering our next generation of artists. We lead a youth advisory committee, which is what the ACAC stands for. And it gives area students the opportunity and authority to build their skills, showcase their talents to our community, and to collaborate with one another to create art experiences that are relevant to their peers. Worldfest, MACAC has partnered with Arts Midwest to bring Worldfest to Minot for these last three years. This year is the final year of their program. They are ending it. And Worldfest tours international musicians to Midwestern communities to foster an understanding of and appreciation for global uniqueness and differences. Worldfest performers spend a week in Minot getting to know the community while performing and giving workshops in local schools and venues, culminating into a free, public performance. A typical week tour consists of eight workshops and two free concerts, engaging approximately 700 students and 200 adults. Our next Worldfest tour is coming this October, the second week of October, and it will feature a Moving Sound, which is a traditional group from Taiwan that does both sound and movement.
The Carnegie Center is, so the Minot Area Council of the Arts took over the management of the Carnegie Center in September of 2021. Since then, we've invested time and resources into improving the building and its grounds. MACAC utilizes this space as a community hub for hosting arts and cultural events. The grounds have been beautified through the Certified Pollinator Teaching Garden in partnership with NDA Extension Master Gardeners. So there's a bee pollinator gardener there, and that's really pretty. The Carnegie Center is available for rentals. As an event, meeting space contributed to its ongoing vitality and community engagement. Over the past 12 months, MACAC has hosted 10 events, along with 93 rentals, accommodating a variety of happenings such as weddings, graduations, business meetings, startup Minot classes, and several other gatherings. The city of Minot receives 20% of the rental revenue, and we are excited to increase the number of rentals in the future with the help of our AmeriCorps Special Events member, Joyce Schleicher. With her help, we've had the opportunity to prioritize updating contracts and fee schedules, organizing and deep cleaning, and creating an overall more organized system and space at the Carnegie Center.
MACAC is also the fiscal agent for the Union Silos Project, which is, it's going to be the largest piece of public art in North Dakota. It will draw tourism. This project will draw tourism and change the view of downtown Minot for years to come. There's a great team that's been working on this for years. We are just the lowly fiscal agent, but Minot Area Council of the Arts being in Minot and being an organization at all makes something like this more possible because there is a 501(c)(3) through which funds can flow to make these sorts of things happen. Our vision is to serve as a central hub of the arts for the Minot area artists and art organizations, fostering a vibrant community through membership programs, community initiatives, and innovative projects for the betterment of artists and Minot area residents while effectively communicating the value of arts and artists to Minot area's broader community and economic development leaders. And this is just kind of a snapshot of our operational budget. This is the actuals from FY '24. The parts of the budget here that are most directly pertinent to city council are the Carnegie Center and the city of Minot funding. As you can see here, 37.5% of the funding that the city of Minot gives to MACAC goes directly to support local arts organizations. The Minot Symphony is 7.5% of that budget. The Minot City Band, which just completed its 103rd season of performances that are free to the public, is 30% of that budget that we get from the city of Minot. The Carnegie Center here accounts for 11% of our funding, but almost 5% of our expenditures, costs which include supplies, ground maintenance, and the 20% of rental income that is paid to the city monthly, is not, is also accounted for here on the expenditures side. The costs of the hundreds of hours of staff time dedicated to scheduling, contracts, communications, advertising, accounting, cleaning, and maintenance are also not included in the Carnegie expenditures you see here. The remaining funding goes to our general fund and helps to support our programming and activities, office space, and miscellaneous costs.
So in closing, the Minot Area Council of the Arts extends its sincere gratitude to the city of Minot for its continued support and partnership. We're proud of its contributions to the cultural fabric of our city. Throughout many programs and collaboration with other community entities, we have demonstrated the power of arts to enrich lives, inspire creativity, and strengthen community bonds. We look forward to continued collaboration with the city of Minot to foster a thriving community for all. Thank you for your continued support of the arts in Minot.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Nice presentation. Thank you both. Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 9.3. I apologize during our special meeting, I totally, for some unknown reason, overlooked the enterprise funds. So Jason, you kind of got out of it, so I guess these are all yours. So if you just kind of want to start wandering up here... So if you just kind of want to start wandering up here for any questions, we'll move on. Just, we'll start off, we'll start off with the sanitation budget. If there's any questions concerning the sanitation budget. How about the garbage? Any questions in reference to garbage collection? Seeing none, how about water?
One, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Just one with that, and Jason, actually, I think it's, we got a bunch of moving parts with the Biota employees. I just want to make sure I have that clear in my head. So we, we have them fully in the twenty-five budget, but if I remember right, are we going to start hiring them pretty quick here to get them going in max? Is that the idea?
That is correct.
Did we have a budget amendment already for that, for this year? That's already taken care of? Okay, I just want to make sure I have that clear. Okay.
Any other questions concerning the water budget? How about the sewer? Seeing none, we'll move on to water collections. The last one I have on my list is NAS. Any questions referring to NAS? And I know Mikey already had one. Any other questions? Thank you, Jason. Okay, um, oh, you had, did you have your answer?
I will, yeah, if you're done.
Oh, okay. Moving on to item number ten. Go ahead.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, since we had a-
Hang on one second.
Sorry.
Did you have a-
Well, I have a, I have a different, maybe it's a different discussion. We didn't spend any time like in sales tax pennies and things like that. Well, I just, I guess I just had a clarifying question. I got this one and then another one. But one is, can, Harold, can you, or maybe if Jenna has to, can you guys explain to me a quick how funds flow in and out of those types of accounts? So as an example, say the property tax relief account, that's, there's money going into that. How do we pull that in so the relief actually happens?
Jenna does her magic.
I was gonna say, you want me to answer that one? Mr. Mayor, Alderman, bless him. So those sales tax collections get collected in the special revenue funds, and then they get transferred as direct property tax relief to the general fund.
And so when does that occur?
That is built in the budget, and we do one-twelfth of the transfer every month.
Okay. And so if I can continue, the question that I had is I was trying to follow that through the, actually, the 2023 year end. It looks like we hold a lot of money in that type of account, like over a million dollars if I remember right. Does that, would we hold a fund balance that's sort of like the other types of reserves in a property tax relief fund?
We do, yes. So if we, if we collect higher than what we anticipated, it will sit in that fund, and then we plan on using it in the following budget season.
Okay. I might have to look further into that one to make sure-
Come visit the finance department. We'll talk.
All right, and if I can continue, Mr. Mayor, I gotta have a second question, maybe not Jenna's. So one of the other things that we're, it actually came up again tonight, we're hearing about franchise fees. Is, is there something in the budget that's actually contemplating franchise, franchise fees now? Or do we have to take action to even contemplate that?
Mr. Mayor and Alderman, bless him, I was actually just talking with the mayor if you wanted me to respond on that, given the comments made here publicly during personal appearances. In the 2025 City Manager Recommended Budget and in the preliminary budget that you guys approved at the last special council meeting, the city staff did not build any new revenues into the 2025 budget for franchise fees. What happened was, I believe one of my jobs as the city manager is to make the council aware of alternatives available to you for revenue streams, particularly those that you may not have capitalized on yet. And so what staff and I have done in part of the City Manager's recommended budget, we had a slide in the presentation about franchise fees where we identified that as a potential revenue source that the city has not capitalized yet on this point. And what the potential revenue would be if you utilize that mechanism as allowed by state law similar to other cities within the state of North Dakota. But we only have one utility in Minot right now that pays franchise fees. So the only thing built into the 2025 budget is what we projected in revenue from that one entity. We have not built in any additional revenues into the 2025 budget contemplating any additional franchise fees that was being saved as the conversation for the council to have after the budget is approved. And if you choose to approve that and put it in, then we would build that in as revenues in future budgets.
Yeah, and that's, that's where I thought we were, and I just wanted to make sure very clearly that if we go forward with the budget, that I'm not missing it somewhere and that it's actually in there and it kicks in as soon as we approve it. So, thanks.
I just wanted to point a clarification. Back to item nine-point-one, did we give direction to staff? Like, do we know what that's, what's coming back to us? Is that coming back to us before we moved on to MACAC? Do they, do you need direction? Is the city manager, is staff looking for direction? Because I wasn't clear on it.
I would appreciate a motion from the council to entertain some general direction. That way, a second can be made, and the entire council can vote on how they'd like to see that particular matter move, if you'd like an ordinance change or otherwise.
Paul?
I guess I'll take a stab. I don't necessarily, whether it needs to be in a motion or direction, just some of the alternatives. I don't, don't necessarily want to see less than eleven PM. I don't like, I don't necessarily think we need to become more restrictive and move to a ten, nine. But I would like to see some options put in front of us, and if that's what the council decides that, when we discuss this, I'm okay with that, having that discussion. But I'd like to see some options where we leave the ordinance as is with the recommendation from the Community Development Director. I'd like to see an option with the removal of the ordinance, like the city manager had stated, with the caveat that we ensure the concerns from the airport director are addressed with safety issues for aircraft. And then I think there's an alternative, maybe moving the shut-off time to a two AM that aligns with possible uses within the CBD. That, it doesn't go beyond that. Just, those are some of my, off the top of my head thoughts. I'd like to see some directions we could possibly go, whether or not any of those are amenable to the rest of the council or maybe, maybe there's one that we haven't thought of that we can work through. But I guess I'll put that in the form of a motion to have that discussion.
Yeah, I'll second it. Just, it really says, let's look at four or five different ways, right? I think that's the idea. I'll second that.
Here's the catch. What's the motion? You just seconded.
So my motion is to have, bring back those recommendations, those possible outcomes of that ordinance, but not limited to. If staff through this process wants to garner input from other staff members or from the city manager or other ordinances, but I'd like to see those three options within that and, and any others that, that would be acceptable to staff or if any of the council members have.
So to be clear on the options, they were remove ordinance, because that's, that's maybe the most straightforward one to say quickly. The second one is just adjust times?
To two AM.
To two AM, okay.
And then leave the ordinance as is with the eleven o'clock.
With the discretion, okay. My second's fine.
You're comfortable with that discussion, Lisa?
So maybe an amendment to that motion, or maybe it can be, you know, in the form of a friendly amendment. But we did talk about the fact that it is, it's not appealable to the city council, and I think that that is important. I think that we should always be given the option to be able to take action on something that one of our staff members just, and it's not in offense to, or in opposition to what Mr. Billingsley did. I think he did a nice job, but I think we should have the, the ability to be able to hear those concerns.
Steph?
And if I may, we do currently have a section in our ordinance that allows for an appeal from administrative decisions that are made by city staff. The way that it applies to this situation is a little tricky, though, because the appeal of the decision needs to be submitted within ten days. And to my knowledge, in this particular instance, neither party aggrieved or allegedly aggrieved have submitted any appeal within that ten-day deadline, or any appeal at all, to my knowledge, has been received from, at the Community Development Office, right? You haven't received anything that I would characterize as an appeal of your decision. More so, it's just been, been complaints, and that's what's before the council here today.
And if I could continue, I don't know that anyone truly knew that was an option. I know that we've had a string of emails going on for a very long time, and I think that some of those may have come in that ten-day period. So whether it was a formal, you know, appeal or not, it still, it just bothers me some that we had no authority to take any action tonight because it was not allowable. And I think that that should be something that would be considered in, in a new ordinance.
Just to be clear, do we need to add that in? If you're saying there is a mechanism already in place for them to appeal?
You can entertain the friendly amendment if you want to. If no one from the council objects, we can insert that option, some options in relation to appeals in as a friendly amendment.
I'm, I'm-
Nobody object? Okay.
No objection?
Okay, Paul? Just one more point, and I know a lot of the individuals from the DBPA have already left, but this comes down to being a good neighbor and working with your neighbors and working within the environments that we have and understanding. I just spent the weekend in downtown Minneapolis with my kids, and there's blackout blinds on the windows for a reason. And I'm not saying that we, that, that's the solution or that's what needs to happen, but friendly discourse and conversation needs to take place first and foremost, and I don't know if that happened in this situation from the onset. I wasn't there at the beginning, but from some of the conversations that I've heard leading up to this meeting and, and what was presented here, it seems very adversarial. And, and again, I think we need to maybe have some more friendly discourse before we get to this point. Just my two cents as an individual, so.
Any further discussion? I do also want to commend Brian for your work on this. I think, in my opinion, I think what you did is you listened to both sides, and you tried to find a friendly compromise that not everybody got what they wanted, but, you know, so I think you, you know, as Councilman Blessam said, you, you did what you were supposed to do. So I commend you on that. So Harold?
Just real quick, just another point that I would like some clarification on. So just in the interim, while we're, and staff will prepare these recommendations and be back, assuming this motion passes, which I anticipate it probably will. But in the meantime, the current regulation is the letter Mr. Billingsley provided with being off at eleven, because at the last meeting, the DBPA made a statement that they were going to leave their lights on until two, and in essence, saying that we're going to ignore the administrative directive. And it was quoted in the paper as this as well, and I have some concern with that approach as well. And so I just want to make sure that the council is in agreement that until you decide otherwise, Mr. Billingsley's letter is in accordance with ordinance and is enforceable in the expectation of the city in this scenario until it changes in the future.
So, Mr. Mayor, the only issue that I've got is that I still can't get my mind around the fact that this even applies. So that's why I have a hard time just sort of stipulating that, yeah, then that's the right way to go. I think Brian acted as if that was the case, and he did a nice job with that. But for me, like, that, that goes kind of back to the question of, does this belong in the illegal arena anyway? And where it's really not our question in the first place. And so, because again, I just, I just don't see where the ordinance actually applies to this situation by the way it's written and what's laid out in it. So that's why I have a hard time just stipulating to say, yeah, they got to stick with that till we get it. Because it's got to go through a lot of processes, right? Didn't we just say it's got to go through the Planning Commission and all kinds of stuff to get resolved?
Rob?
I'm kind of in the same agreement with Mike. I mean, you know, if we're going to look at this and change it, and Brian has done his part and said, hey, you guys got to shut these off by eleven, but we're only making one group of these two do anything to change their behavior. Mr. Thomas isn't being forced to shut his blinds or anything else. We aren't shutting streetlights off, which are above the sixteen-foot height. So my question becomes, why don't we just leave it as is? Let both parties do whatever they're going to do, and then when we figure this out in two weeks or a month or whatever it is, then that's what happens. But, I mean, if we're not going to make Mr. Thomas do anything to try and abate looking at the lights, why do we need to make the people that have shut them off?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the issue here is that Mr. Thomas did not do any alterations to create the situation. The DBPA got the private property owner to agree to put up lights, which then triggered the ordinance in question. So as Mr. Billingsley responded earlier, from our perspective as staff, Mr. Thomas did nothing to alter the situation. We don't have the right, we have nowhere in ordinance to go make any property owner shut their blinds. What we do have in ordinance is anyone that installs ornamental lighting over sixteen feet, that we may require additional restrictions at the opinion of our Community Development Director in that scenario. So that, in essence, in my opinion, and, and again, my opinion is the staff has done their effort to enforce the ordinance as applied by, by council, and it's, it's enforceable by the attorney's office going forward. The question, again, to my point here just a few minutes ago, is, is there a different directive from the council in doing something different than what Mr. Billingsley has communicated in writing in the interim while we're figuring out whether or not we're changing the ordinance or not?
Mr. Mayor, my thought would be that we align with exactly what City Manager said at this point. We have an ordinance in place, and there can be a debate whether or not this, this fits within that or whether it is legal or not. And if I were the downtown, if I were the downtown, I would say you get more bees with honey than vinegar. So I would probably try to play by the rules until we work this out and it goes through the process, which is in front of us. That would be my thought, and, and I'll leave it to legal whether or not it's enforceable or not. My thoughts.
Just real quick.
Mike, then Lisa.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Oh, well, thank you. So I know someone's going to ask the question once we leave here, so I'm going to ask it now. Are, all of our conversations tonight and our, our lack of action does not prohibit the DBPA from going forward with their fundraising and putting other lights up, correct? The only stipulation that would be in place for them is that if the lights are above sixteen feet, they should be in contact with Mr. Billingsley, and Mr. Billingsley could, he could include these same stipulations if he chose to. But we're not stopping the DBPA from putting up lights at this point. There's nothing that we have done, correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I may respond, that is correct. In fact, I would argue that if they came in and installed the lights at fifteen feet, eleven inches and three-quarters, there would be no stipulation. It's allowed by ordinance, and there would be no response from the city about whether it's allowed or not. Our interpretation would be in accordance with the current ordinance is it's below sixteen feet, it's allowed by ordinance.
Thank you.
Mike?
I was, I was just going to add quickly that even the eleven PM number, I don't believe is what Mr. Thomas is asking for. I think he's saying these lights are not suitable, and they need to be completely different. So I realize this is a compromise from the very beginning, but I don't think he got much of what he wanted even from that at eleven.
Any further discussion? Paul?
To that point, that's why, again, that, those are my directives, directives I gave to staff. If anybody else feels that they want to include anything within that and say the lights shouldn't be allowed, I, the floor is open, and I'm willing to accept an alternative introduced as well, so.
We have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Please call the roll.
Pittner?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Samuelson?
Yes.
Blessam?
Yes.
Fuller?
Yes.
Janser?
Yes.
Olson.
Motion carries. Moving on to item ten on the agenda, and that's adjournment.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned. Good meeting.